Good evening. I call the City of University Heights City Council meeting to order. Today's Tuesday, October 9th, 2018. Welcome, everyone. The council is all present. And the first order of business is approval of minutes September 11th. They've been circulated. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, the minutes for September 11th are approved by unanimous consent. Tonight, we have a presentation by Chris Barnum. Welcome, Chris. Chris is here to present on data analysis benchmarks to support initiatives to correct implicit bias. Chris, are you ready to present?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Yeah.
So, my name is Chris Barnum. Just a little bit about my background. I'm a professor at St. Ambrose University in Davenport. I've been there about 15 years. Had PhD from the University of Iowa, sociology, research methods, theory.
I think you're gonna have to get closer to this microphone for the camera, for the video. Thank you.
I'm a little afraid of these things, so... So, anyway, so prior to getting my PhD, I worked as a police officer in Cedar Rapids for 25 years. I worked on the street the entire 25 years. I worked nights and never got off before 4:00 a.m. And I worked on the southeast side of town, which is the high minority concentration area of the town. So, I come at it both from an academic and as a police officer. I have quite a bit of experience, actually, in both fields. So, the way all this got started was about 10 years ago, the city of Davenport came to St. Ambrose and talked to me and said, "Hey, we'd like to know if there's some way that you can look at our police data." So, we started partnering with them. After we got that ball rolling, that project turned out pretty well. And Iowa City, Ames, Iowa State University, the city of Dubuque, and some other communities have contacted us for help with this very thing. So, what actually we specialize in and what we do is we bring our graduate students in. So, I'm the director of graduate studies, so we use a lot of graduate students. We bring them in. I'll show you what we do here. But essentially, we look for what's called disproportionality. We look for it in two areas. So, there's two areas you have to think about when you do this. So, disproportionality means a difference between police stops and some sort of benchmark, okay? And I'll talk about that. So, you have a benchmark, and then you compare the police stops to it. So, you have disproportionality in the stop, the decision to make a stop. And then there's also disproportionality in the outcome of a stop. So, you think about it. The officer's making two decisions, right? The officer's making a decision whether or not to stop a car. And so, we look forward to see if there's racial disproportionality there. And that's the tricky part. And then after the car's stopped, the officer makes another decision. What am I gonna do? So, if you get stopped by an officer, what can happen to you? You can get a ticket, you can get arrested, you can get your car searched, or you can get a warrant, right? Those are essentially it. And so, you track all those things, and then you see if there's differences between driving populations that way. And I'll show you how we do that. But that's just kind of an introduction of how we do it. The hardest part to doing this kind of work is looking at raw police data and comparing it to a benchmark in terms of how many minority drivers should be stopped by the police if there's no bias. That's essentially what we're looking at. So, I'll show you how we do that. So, let me take my PowerPoint. So, this is actually the presentation we made for Iowa City. So, we've been working with Iowa City now for several years. And so, what we do in Iowa City, first, we get their police data. And like I say, then we have to compare it to something. So, we have to compare it to the percentage of minority drivers on the road. There's several ways you can do that, right? You could look at census data. You can look at maybe traffic accident data. But what we do is, and this is where my graduate assistants come in, they go out, and they're... I think they're down here tonight, actually, and they watch traffic on the roads. And we break it out into square mile units. And the reason those units there that you see are highlighted is because that's where Iowa City does most of their traffic stops, specifically Zone 21, which is downtown. So, immediately south of Zone 21 would be the Broadway Cross Park area. We watch that a lot because they have a higher concentration of minority members there. And then Zone 28, just above that, would be University Heights area, right there. So, we watch Melrose as you move out to the west and in, and to the east. So, we have a pretty good idea of the drivers on Melrose and on Sunset, for that matter, because Sunset comes up through 28 there. So, University Heights is kind of a little island, as you all know. So, we probably wouldn't even need to really watch traffic here because we know what's coming in and out of your community. I imagine that most of the cars traveling through your community are commuting through your community. So, we would know based on what's going on in Iowa City. And we've actually been collecting data in Iowa City since 2010, at least, maybe a little before that. And I think now we're up to 75,000 observations that we've made there, all across town. So, what we do, I'll just keep this real brief. Our observers go out at selected intersections. We watch traffic at various times of the day, every day of the week, weekends, football weekends, the whole works. And they simply sit there in their car, white male, black male, right, black female. And we compute the percentages of what we see. And we have different observers rotate through each spot so we can compare, to make sure that everyone's seeing sort of the same thing. And based on that, then we compute our benchmark, and that's what we compare police data to. So, like, for example, in Zone 28, if we, if 10% of the drivers on the road are black during the daytime, we look at the police data for the stops made in Zone 28. And say they're 12%, so they're 2% higher than our benchmark. We wouldn't get too worried about that if they're 2% higher because there's sampling error, right? What we're looking at is a sample of the driver, so there's sampling error, just like with any sample. But if they were 32%, and we saw 12%, we'd be more concerned about that. So, usually what we find in everywhere we've looked is there is a small level of disproportionality on the police department, but that could be due to sampling error. But we look a little deeper, and this is what I want to talk to you about tonight, is we actually break it down by individual officers. And so, we can compute, then, the disproportionality level for individual officers. And essentially, what we're doing is comparing them to each other, and we look for officers that stand out. And I don't mean that necessarily in a good way. They're different from other officers. So, we've developed a computer app, which we wrote ourselves. It's proprietary. Let me show you that here real quick.
Hey, Chris, do you have a PowerPoint? Is that what you're doing?
This part is a PowerPoint.
Do you want a clicker?
I'm actually done with that part right now.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Yeah, fair enough.
So... Okay, so this part, I'll explain briefly, then I'll go to the screen because it's just easier. So, this is our computer program. And what those dots represent are individual officers. Okay, so what we do is for each individual officer, we compute a disparity index, which I can go into, but it'll take me a little time. So, I'll just tell you that it's essentially an odds ratio. In other words, the higher the value of your index, that means the more likely you are to stop a minority driver in comparison to a white driver, given the benchmarks. So, for example, if we're comparing two ratios, right? So, if we have, if we have 10 over 10, 10 over 10 equals 1, right? So, 10% of the stops are black drivers, and our benchmark says 10%. That ratio equals 1, and then on the bottom, it's 90% white for the officer, and the benchmark's 90%. Are you following me? So, you take the ratio of two fractions. And one over, so that 10 over 10, 90 over 90 is 1 over 1. 1 divided by 1 equals 1, right? That's even odds. That's like betting odds. That's 1 to 1 odds. That means they're just as likely to stop a minority driver as a non-minority driver. If you have a score of 2, that means you're twice as likely to stop a minority driver as a white driver. If you have a score of 3, 3 times as likely, or 300%, however you want to think of it. So, if you look up there, you can see mostly officers are bunched together. They're bunched together around the number 2. You don't really need to worry about that. But as you go to the right on the screen, those are officers with higher scores. And that blue line, that blue line across, that horizontal blue line, means that's our, a minimum of 100 stops. So, we're not comfortable unless they make a certain level of stops because of statistical error. So, if you look up there, you can see one officer way to the right. That officer has a score of about 6, which means that officer is 6 times as likely to stop minority drivers as non-minority drivers. Now, so I'll just go up here, and then I'll come back and talk. But I want to point out the officer to you so we're all on the same page.
Hey, I got one of these, too. You want it?
Yeah, that would definitely be great.
Just press the button in the middle.
Now, you're gonna test my hand icon. So, this guy right there. So, there's two outliers in that dataset. There's one up at the top. That officer is actually, has a low level of disproportionality, but is making about 1,200 stops a year, which is a lot. That's a lot of stops. And then we have this guy out here who's making about 300, and with a very high, with a very high value for that disparity index. So, obviously, the question I always get, well, what does the chief think about that? Well, what do you think the chief thinks about that? It's a difficult question for a police chief when you discover something like in your dataset. And by the way, we tend to find that everywhere we look, a similar pattern. So, what we find is almost all the, all the officers are grouped together, which means nothing's going on. That's, that's a good thing. But we do find a few that tend to have much higher values. And when you find that, as an administrator, as a police administrator, they actually are grateful. They want to know about it. But the question becomes, what do you do about it? So, do you counsel the officer, do you discipline the officer, or do you watch the officer over a longer period of time to see if the pattern continues? These are all the types of things that we consult with. But, so the main thing we look for is that right there. And then, of course, we can look at the outcomes of the stops, too, which I can show you. But this is, this is the part right here. This is by far the most difficult to analyze. And because of the benchmark issues, with a smaller department, you may not find anything like this. This tends to be found in larger departments. So, we found this pattern in Davenport. We found it in Dubuque. We found it in Iowa City. Haven't analyzed Ames yet. We're just starting on those data. And so, that's, this is how, this is what we look for, actually. So, this is, so you have an officer out there who's 6 times as likely to stop black drivers as white drivers, given the benchmarks. Now, keep in mind, it doesn't matter what side of town the officer's working in because we take that into account. So, the officer can't say, "Well, I work in an area with a high percentage of minority members," because we're comparing the officer's stops to the benchmark where the stops are made at.
Have you found, in talking with the police, that there is often a correlation between other behaviors that have been observed? And this, this is sort of like definitive, but...
So, well, it depends on what you mean by other behaviors.
Well, other racist or discriminatory.
Well, they look at that. I'm not, I'm actually not at liberty to say in cases, you know, specific cases like this. They definitely look at that, but I can tell you what I look at, and I can show you. So, this officer has, we, this is not his actual number. We gave him fake numbers so they can't be identified. So, this officer, we gave the number 45. And now, we can look and see how this officer does in terms of outcomes of the stop. So, you remember the difference? So, first, there's the decision to make the stop, right there. The officer's very high with disproportionality in the decision to make the stop. Now that the stop's made, does the officer treat people differently between screens, or between minority and non-minority drivers? And I'll show you how we look at that.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
So, you only code drivers as either white or black? Is that correct, or?
No.
How do you account for other minority groups?
Yeah, so, we code, actually, this is a very interesting question. So, we group Asians with whites, and I'll explain that. And then, everyone else is minority. That's how we code. And you're asking, why did you group Asians with whites? So, when we look at police data, we tend to find that Asians are stopped at lower numbers than their, than their driving numbers in the population. So, they have below, their, their levels of disproportionality are on the other side, right? They're not high. They're lower than would be expected. So, if you grouped Asians with other minorities, it would tend to obscure levels of disproportionality. So, that's why we group minorities with whites. There's, there's actually a literature on that. The literature in criminology is called the dangerous classes. And the dangerous classes essentially are blacks and Hispanics, people of color like that. And Asians, stereotypically, are not considered or not viewed as dangerous. So, the classic stereotype of a young black male, right, is dangerousness. And so, that's why we look for disproportionality there. That's where the literature on implicit bias shows up, too, with that. So, so that's how we group.
Okay.
Yep. Now, the Hispanic thing is very difficult because it's hard to tell by looking at somebody if they're Hispanic or not.
Yeah, and when somebody's going by at 35 miles per hour, I think there's probably...
So, that's very difficult.
Okay.
And so, so really, what it really usually does boil down to is minority is black, for the most part. Do you have any other questions before I show you this last little bit here? Okay, so, did you remember the officer's number when I mentioned it?
45.
45, so... So, now, we're looking at the citation odds ratio. How much are likely is Officer 45 to hand out a citation when he has a black driver stop versus a white driver? And you can see that, I think, that value, although my eyes aren't great, it looks like about 2.74. So, that's almost, he's almost, after the car's stopped, now we don't need to worry about benchmarks because now we're just comparing percentages within the stop. It's a statistical issue, so you don't have to worry about the benchmarks. So, when he has a driver stopped, 3 times more likely to write a ticket of a black driver than a white driver. Okay, so that's tickets. So, now, you have two behaviors, right? So, you have the stop. You have one of the outcomes. So, what's another outcome? Do you remember? Arrests, right? So, let's look at arrests. So, I've got my little arrest thing here, and it's loading. And this officer is second in arrest. So, the officer has, let me get a little closer so you can see. So, that's 2.58. He made 31 arrests in a year off of the traffic stop. These are just traffic stops, arrests. And based on that, he's almost 3 times as likely to arrest a black driver as a white driver. So, you, you have, you know, he's first in the ticket category, first in the stop category, second in the arrest category. So, the other big one we look at, and this, in my opinion, is the most important of all, is voluntary search requests. So, what's going on here? So, an officer walks, stops a car, walks up to the car, does not have probable cause to search the car. Can't get in the car. There's only one way to get into that car, right? And that's to ask the driver, "Do you care if I search the car?" And so, we track that. We track that, and we can track whether or not officers are asking that question of black drivers more than white drivers. Now, why would that be? Why would that be? Why would an officer ask, so there's no PC, right? So, why is that question being asked? There's a variety of reasons it possibly could be. One of them's biased, but not all are biased. So, I mean, you have to keep a kind of a open mind about it, that there might be legitimate reasons for it. So, the arrest, the arrest, just let me talk about the legitimate reasons out of fairness. So, the arrest statistic. So, is it possible, without bias, for that to occur? For someone to arrest 3 times as many blacks on a traffic stop as whites? Is that, is that possible legitimately, do you think? I obviously am asking the question because it is. So, and it would be possible if this were true, if some of these things were true. Let's say there's a difference between the driving populations and the percentage of drivers who are driving under suspension. Or there's a difference in the percentage of the drivers who carry a bench warrant. Both of those situations, the officer really doesn't have any discretion. The officer has to make an arrest. And if it happens that when the officer pulls over, black people, they're more likely to have a suspension or a warrant, it's gonna show up in there, and that's not bias. The officer, the officer literally has nothing they can do about that. Okay, so, I'm a little leery of looking at, at arrest statistics for that reason. But now, when you're asking somebody, "Can I search your car?", that's total discretionary behavior on the officer's part. The officer doesn't have to ask that question. That's solely the officer's choice, right? Would you agree? The officer doesn't have to ask that. The officer's only not asking every driver they pull over, "Can I search your car?" They're only asking some of them. They don't do it very often. But if they do do it, and they're doing it more to black people than white people, that might be an indicator of bias. So, we really look closely at that. So, I'll show you that one.
Can I just ask another question? You said you're looking for outliers, but when you look at that list right there, nobody is at 1.
Well, that's because it's ranked from top to bottom.
Yeah, but there's 14 entries, and we're seeing 10 of them.
Yeah, so...
One is perfect, too.
One is perfect, right. So, there, but again, it might be legitimate on arrests. It might, it very well may be, especially with suspensions. It may be that there's differences in the driving population for that reason. And so, and there's structural reasons for that, just so... So, if, let me give you an example. So, let's, so would we all agree that socioeconomic status is correlated with race? Okay, so if you're a minority member, you're more likely to come from a lower socioeconomic status than a non-minority member. Therefore, you might have a car that has more equipment violations. You might get tickets. Maybe you can't pay your tickets, so you go under suspension. And so, so for just legitimate reasons like that, you can, you can, you, it doesn't take too many to start shaping the pattern that you get there.
Is there any, is there any relationship between your findings and the crime figures in the county?
That's an interesting question that the police are always trying to answer. I don't know. That's the question. So, what you're really asking me is this. By stopping, by stopping cars aggressively, does it lower crime? And the answer is, really, nobody knows the answer to that.
Well, I'm on Crime Stoppers Board, and I'm, I just see a relationship to the crime factor and the...
Yeah, so Davenport's really different than Iowa City.
Yes.
So, Davenport, in Davenport, we have a really big problem with gun violence there. I don't know if you follow Davenport at all, but there's a, there's a lot of shootings in Davenport, particularly in one area of town. So, the police aggressively stopped cars there. And it's, and they have a level of disproportionality because the people that generally get stopped are black drivers. Young black male drivers are getting stopped. And the police are arguing, "We're trying to knock down the gun crime." So, the question becomes, and I can't answer it. It's, it's a, this is a question where, and this, I'll finish up here. What we do is we bring the community together with the police department. And I ask that question, does stopping cars aggressively in these high-gun areas reduce the level of gun violence? And do you want your police department doing that? And the police are present, and they talk back and forth. That's why this work is beneficial right there. Because it gets the two groups talking instead of just accusing each other. And it's very beneficial from that standpoint. So, but I don't really know, to be honest with you, I don't know if it does knock it down. And I was a cop for 25 years, so, I mean, I've seen it from both sides, so I'm not sure it really does.
Yeah, because I'm not sure either.
Yeah, so my, you know, my whole focus on this is not to take one side or the other, it's just to be right down the middle. And I'll say it either way, how I believe, and sometimes I don't make friends, so, but, on either side. But maybe that's a good thing. But the, so this is essentially what we do.
Do you also help the community set up the indexes?
What do you mean by the?
For the benchmarks.
So, we, so actually, we go out and just watch the traffic, and we set them up that way. Yep, yep, that's, that's on us, and we were really careful to check them. And so, we compare them. So, we're like, what we see, you know, in the downtown area, we compare it to what the census says and so forth, trying to validate them. But again, it's a sample. So, so what you really look for are these outliers, these people that are different than the other ones.
You're trending.
Yep.
Do you have concerns in the size of our town that we might have statistical significance problems?
So, I think probably, Chief, how many officers do you have?
Five.
Okay, so, you're probably not gonna, they're probably all gonna be grouped together. It's gonna be difficult to tell. It would be interesting, I think, to just observe the overall level of disproportionality. So, if you're, we don't really worry too much. If we see scores around 2, it's when they get above 3, 4, 5 times as likely to stop. That's, if everyone on the department was doing that, that might be concerning. Yeah, I have no idea if that's going on or not. And then, but the outcome of the stop, we can nail down 100% accurately because we don't need benchmarks for that. And I can explain that statistically later on when you have more time, but just trust me on that one.
When it comes to how often you look at data, and again, this might go to the size of our town, is it something that you wait monthly, quarterly, every year? Like, how, because, again, kind of the statistics.
We do it a year. We usually look at it annually. And so, Iowa City makes about 12,000 stops a year. How many do you make?
We average between, let's say, 350 a month, so...
Yeah, so you're making about, you're making about 4,000, 5,000 a year?
Yeah.
That would be enough.
Right in that ballpark, yeah.
So, Davenport only makes 6,000 a year.
Look, ZEP had an article, an investigatory article on this, and we were pretty high in proportion to our area neighbors.
And we're gonna be doing, you know, we're looking at a, at some changes that would attempt to reduce the stops on Melrose by having like a, you know, LED sign.
Right.
You know? And so, I mean, are there any other issues, I guess, that you can see when it comes to, you know, our fit with what you do? Is it something that we would wait a year and then try? I mean, I think one of the concerns that I had with the discussion with our group here is that, you know, if we're gonna start collecting data, which we want to do, you know, it seems a little bit dangerous to be collecting data and then not know what it means.
Right.
You know, we're a smaller town with a smaller budget than Iowa City, obviously. And so, the question is just kind of when we would be looking and engaging you, you know, the cost of that. You know, is there, you know, because of the things we're talking about, would there be, you know, services that you maybe would say, "Well, we could do that for you, but it really wouldn't tell us much," kind of like, you know, like, I know after the stop, it seems like it might be more significant.
Right. Yeah, the after-stop stuff would be quick, very quick and easy to do. I don't think we'd need to collect benchmarks here because we know...
For Miles City.
We know all the way around your town. You know, I just can't believe just west, on your western border, it's gonna change that much between the hospital and, and the, you know, 2 blocks this way.
Yeah, well, we're Beat Four of Johnson County. So, it would be reasonable for us to look at, in conjunction with Iowa City.
Yeah, so...
Because that would give you better data.
When we had that map up there, I, that, that number, that's you. So, I already know what it is. So...
So, Chris, would it be possible to consider just picking up? So, I consider us being the donut hole. So, we're, what did you say? We're Beat, what?
Four. We're four.
Area four.
We're surrounded by Beat Four. To complete that donut hole, could we standardize our indexes to the Beat Four algorithms that are in place right now?
So, you could, you could compare yourself to Iowa City officers, but that's a little bit comparing apples to oranges. So, I wouldn't recommend... So, um, I wouldn't recommend that. I, I, I think I would, um, if I, if I were you and I did this, I would have, I would just do the analysis as we've done in Iowa City. Keeping in mind the small N, which means small number of officers. And, um, what I, what I would try to focus on, I would look, I, when I look at, when I look at a new town, when I come in and look at, I look for pretextual stops and search requests. Those are the two things I look for. So, a pretext stop is a stop made based on an excuse, essentially. So, you want to get the car pulled over, because you want to know who's driving the car. We did it all the time up in Cedar Rapids. I mean, we, you know, the southeast side there, we had some, you know, that's, was a pretty rough area, still is. And so, you know, there was times when we, crime suppression, you want to know who's driving cars, so you look for a reason to stop it. It's legal. It's, uh, there's a Supreme Court case, Ren versus USA. It's totally legal to do it, but it can lead to disproportionality. So, um, you know, you, you, when you say, what do you mean, look for an excuse? So, you might look for a license plate light out. Something, you know, pretty, pretty, you know, cheap. So, you look for a license plate light out, or maybe, um, you look for some sort of an equipment violation, maybe a cracked windshield, or maybe an obstructed vision charge, where they have something hanging from the mirror, which is obstructing their view. Gives you a reason to stop the car. It's not really the reason why you're interested in stopping the car. That's a pretext stop. Then, once you get the car stopped, what you would do as an officer, you'd go up and do what I said. You, you try to get permission to search the car. And the way an officer will do that is they'll usually say, okay, I'm going to write you a warning. Uh, one last question before I go. You don't have any drugs or anything in your car, any hand grenades or atomic bombs or anything like that, right? And the driver will invariably say, no. And then, the next words out of the officer's mouth will be, well, you don't mind then if I take a look, would you? Which is a question where you're asking, right? And it's very difficult for the driver at that point to say no.
No question.
Well, they've just said no to, to the question the first time, so now you, you see what you've done. And it's, that's really the way the game's played, I can tell you that from my experience. And so, now, they say, no, I don't mind. And so, now you're in the car.
What would be the precise steps, um, to, I guess, get a sense of, you know, we're not in the middle of budgeting right now, but we are trying to look at what we can do, um, you know, to, to make kind of our overall view of, you know, officer bias and profiling work. Kind of the steps to, you know, if we're going to retain you and the costs and when that all...
You're kind of interested in how much something like this would cost?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it varies from town to town. So, we wouldn't be doing a benchmark here. We could probably just do the analysis for roughly $5,000. It would be in that ballpark. So, the issue would be, would you go through ME directly or go through Ambrose? Most of the other communities go through Ambrose. And the money is funneled to graduate students. But, I'll be honest with you, it's tough to get them to work for anything less than $10,000 millennials, right? So, um, so it's, it's, it's 5,000, they might go for it, they might not. There's a fair amount of work they would have to do. They might just say, no, I don't want to do it. If that were the case, then you can just, I would just do it for you. And, uh, that would be, you know...
And what would the timeline be here? Would we collect data for a year and then check in with you, or is that...
So, are you collecting data on stops now?
We are, but we're going to be upgrade, I mean, the, yeah, the plan is to upgrade to the, I'll let you add whatever I missed, but update to the, upgrade to the Iowa City approach.
Yeah, I'd go a year then.
And can you tell us what methods we're using right now?
Yeah, the only method we have now is, it's a, it trans, it goes into an Excel form. When you export it, it's really just a free online service that you can design the form. So, it doesn't currently match all the parameters that you would look for there in the same categories. So, the, the data would be, would have to be, a lot of work would have to be done to combine it into what you would use for that.
The check, the checklist that they use in Iowa City now, that Troy Kelsey introduced, uh, that would be applicable in terms of collecting.
So, in your cars, if you could use the same MDT setup that they have?
Right, I, we have already contacted the soft detect, and they, since Iowa City paid them to put that into their computers, they're, they've already given us a price on what that'll cost to add that, the same way as Iowa City does it on the traffic stop, the contact card.
So, if you did that, then it would still be in an Excel sheet. I'd still get the data that way. And, um, you can see, I already have the software written to analyze it. So, it's pretty easy.
My only question with that is, so you said that citation to a warning is obviously a benchmark or a parameter that you'd look at. So, how do you account for difference? If you have, the officer stops a vehicle that has four or five violations, yes, they issue a citation, but they also issue, hey, you have three equipment violations, and I'm going to give you a citation for speeding, but hey, you also need to get these fixed, versus the officer who stops just for the viol, you know, doesn't look beyond that, doesn't issue any warnings. How do those, is it, is, if the stop has a citation and a warning, does it count in both categories? Or is it only the...
We can do it that way. Uh, it's, it's sort of, that, that part, we usually talk about with, we would talk about how you want to do it. And, um, we can do it that way. This would be a little different, community. So, um, generally speaking, we separate, separate out moving violations from equipment violations. And, um, and then we look for disproportionality comparing moving versus equipment. So, if you think about it like a moving violation, a lot of times made with radar, right? Or, I don't, do you guys use laser here?
Yeah.
So, with a laser, right, you're pointing way down the road, you can't even see the driver a lot of times. You're making up your mind to stop the car, based on your instrumentality. And when we, when we do that, you know what we find? No disproportionality. And then, when we look at equipment violations, we find disproportionality. And those are generally based on when you can see the driver. So, I mean, that's, that's something, but, but again, like what you're saying, if there's multiple, that, that muddies the water a great deal.
Okay, I just wasn't sure how the, if the software was built to analyze for that, or...
So, what we have is, so, for, for a moving violation, we have a column, right? So, stop occurred on this date, you have the dates, the officer, blank, blah, 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 blah. Moving, it's either a yes or no. Equipment, it's either a yes or no. They can both be yeses.
Okay.
And so, I mean, we can, we, we can account for that. It hasn't been too much of an issue in the larger communities, but it might be here. That's something that we, you know, we'd work with you on, if we did it.
Yeah, I guess, I just wanted to know if it was, if you checked yes to citation, can you also check yes to warning? Or if there's a citation issued, that's the end of the stop?
So, so that one, we wouldn't know. So, you can't get both a warning and a citation. Because if you get a citation, you've gotten a citation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you look at, I think the Iowa City, um, program has a field for officer comments?
Yeah, it does.
Do you look at those, or just totally just...
No, we don't, uh, we don't look at those, no. So, we just look at the data.
Do you see that they fill those out?
Sometimes, so it's hit or miss. And a lot of times, it's, seems to be some sort of justification for the stop. I mean, I read them, but we don't, we don't formally analyze those in any way.
Are there any questions for Chris?
I just want to clarify that the 5,000 is an annual cost to have our data analyzed every year. If we move forward with this, yeah?
Yeah, we talk about that. So, sometimes we work out multi-year plans, uh, which is cheaper.
Okay.
So, but it depends. It, it would depend on, I'd have to actually look at the data before I told you for sure how much, you know. But I, I'm just giving you an estimate. It's $5,000. I, I would recommend doing it at least two years.
Yeah.
So, you can see if there's a change. And I'd also recommend this. I, I would do it without telling the officers the first year. But that's up to you. And I'll tell you why. Since I got a lot of funny looks there, I'll tell you why. So, if somebody's watching you, do you change your behavior?
Yeah.
That's why.
I just don't know how we would not tell her.
Yeah, they're going to, they're going to know we're switching the data.
Yeah.
But they might not know it's analyzed, though, right? You might not, I mean, you can just say, well, we're going to start doing this, but don't tell them that egghead from St. Ambrose is going to be looking at it.
This is a public meeting, it's televised.
Well, I, I'm just...
I mean, I'm just going to...
And I say this, you know, so I, I'm not trying to keep any secrets. So, I'm, I'm just giving you my advice. And, um, and they're obviously going to know you collecting data.
Which we are already, so, I mean...
Chris, I do have a question regarding self-sufficiency at any point in time. Or, we're all, we're, will our chief at any point in time build up enough expertise to monitor the data, produce queries and reports and data mine?
So, probably what we could do down the road, um, is, so our software's proprietary. So, we wouldn't give it away, but we could give it to you. We could let you use it very, very cheap. And, um, actually, it sits on a server. You just upload your data to it, and you can have that, you could do it monthly, you could do it whenever you want, then.
What's the practice? The, the best practice for, if it's, uh, available, um, you know, on the cloud, what's the best practice for evaluating?
So, yeah.
Especially if you happen to be the donut hole that has the most contacts?
Well, like I, I mean, the timeframe, I, I, the larger, the larger number of stops you have, the more statistical reliability, invalidity you're going to have. So, I would, I would really be hesitant to look at something less than, say, 5,000 stops. I would, I would like to see 5,000-ish, and you're in, you're in the ballpark right there.
So, is it better for us to do the analysis on like a semi-annual?
You said annual.
Basis?
I would say...
To have enough stops?
Yeah, I would say...
Because we don't have 5,000 stops.
And is that per officer, then, or is that just looking department-wide?
So, per officer, we look at, we like 100 stops.
Okay.
And I bet your officers get that.
What do we do with newbies that, you know, we have a high turnover in our department? How do you adjust for that?
That wouldn't matter.
That wouldn't matter?
No.
Okay.
Well, most of our stops are due to complaints about speeding. So, once we have another monitor for the speed and notify them that, you know, that they're entering a city and they can see.
Yeah, the signs, yeah.
Yeah, then, uh, but whether you have to tell them what your, their mileage is, I don't think is, you know, once they see alert, they should look down and see how fast they're driving.
There's actually, you know, I, I commute from Cedar Rapids to Davenport for my job, and I come in on Locust Street, and they have one of those as Yen Town, 35, right? You know, it goes from 45 to 35, and you do slow down. I think they, I think that probably would work for you.
Do you know about citizen review boards? Is, you talk about that just a little tiny bit, because...
Well, yeah, but just ask me if you have any questions. I mean, so, do, am I in favor of them, or?
Yes.
I think they're very effective for certain things, and other things, not so much. Sorry. That doesn't help me.
Can you elaborate?
How about for a town our size?
For serious use, of course, I think they're, they're a good idea. Some of the other stuff, I'm not so sure. But, so, are y'all like familiar with that shooting that happened, the police shooting in Cedar Rapids with the gentleman who was shot in the neck? Something like that. They don't have a review board in Cedar Rapids, but it's effective for that type of thing. A complaint on a noisy party, less so, in my opinion.
I don't, that wouldn't be picked up on the ordinance. So, Chris, we're, I'd like for you to stay next to a short ordinance presentation on 235. Uh, which is a ordinance that we're going to be discussing. So, I'm going to ask if we can bring that up quickly, so you can get a sense of where, where we've been and where, where we're going. So, um, yeah, I don't think we'd be doing, I don't think the ordinance covers the, uh...
No, it'd be specific, it'd be specific to what you're talking about, about the, the traffic stops and really just pedestrian contacts and those.
For people, if they felt that they were being, in a sense, profiled, or you know...
Yeah, um, well, again, so, I, I think if you're going to make decisions in terms of disproportionality, because you're going to have two sides to the story, I think it should be data-driven. And if a review board would review the data and understand the data, and understand them fairly, understand the data fairly, then yes, I think it would be a good idea. If, if, if the review board would be more interested in the emotional content of the complaint, I don't really think that's effective. That's just my opinion again, right? So, you don't have to take it.
Any other questions?
And of course, accessing your, uh, your cloud, um, software, if we had a CRB that, you know, had a situation with number 45, and they need, you know, received a complaint, and they convened to review, they could, you know, the chief could quickly access that data, you know, strip it of any personal identifying information. So, you'd just be looking at dots and comprehending the movement on the blue line from one to four.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. And then, you know, and then, um, and then the discussion would be, why is this officer so different from the other ones?
And then, okay, perfect.
And I'm sorry to keep asking questions here. In terms of the board, if, if a board weren't the entity that was taking on those other kind of two-sided issues and trying to work through those, what do you see as, from the different cities that you look at? What is an effective tool to deal with those? I mean, the, I know the NAACP, I think, takes calls, and what, what do you see?
I, uh, in my opinion, the most effective model I've worked with is Davenport. And the model there is they have a citizen, uh, it's not a citizen review board, but they have a, um, it's called C, CPAC? I can't remember what that acronym stands for. But it, um, they meet with the police to review my findings together with the police. And it's, and it's, it's done in a spirit of cooperation. And I find that to be very effective. The police at first didn't like it, to be honest with you, but now they've really grown to appreciate it, because it's, they've found that they have more buy-in from the community.
And are they, is, is some, I mean, is the data being stripped of the personal identifiers before that?
Yeah, yes, it always is. I think it's C cap, actually.
It depends a, a great deal on the compilation of the board.
It does. It does indeed.
Because there's built-in bias there.
It does indeed. And in fact, you're absolutely right, because that, uh, board has had some turnover, and people were upset that it didn't go far enough.
Because I've seen, I've seen some ugly, ugly results.
No, no, you're absolutely right with that. Yes, you have to have people of good faith on that board.
Yeah.
And you have to have the police willing to do it.
Yes, yes.
Do you find that some of the people with good faith, uh, generally have a little bit more involvement in these issues? So, they're good enough at understanding that blacks are picked up seven times more than a white individual is?
So, usually, these boards, the ones I've been associated with, have, um, community leaders from the, from the minority community, like a, a church leader oftentimes, or maybe the, a member of the NAACP. LULAC, we have a strong involvement with them. But then, they also have other people on, on the committee, too. So, it's, it's a broad range of people that they have.
Sure, sure.
Are they all residents of the town, or are they kind of like experts sometimes?
In, um, in Davenport, it's quad cities, interfaith communities involved. So, that, you know, the quad city's a little bit different. But, um, but usually, they are members of, of the community.
Yeah, I would think it would be residents who had an interest in the integrity.
I would suggest residents, too.
Yeah.
But it, it's a little different animal there.
Yeah, right, in tri-cities that, or quad cities, I guess, yeah. I taught school a year when they're at City, at the high school.
Yeah.
I, you don't have to explain anymore.
Central there? Is that Central High? Central High down?
Yes, yes.
I know what you're talking about.
Yes.
If we have more questions, do we go through Nick and ask you, or that type of thing?
You can just get ahold of me.
I can send out, if you don't mind, I can send your contact information.
Sure, that's fine, yep. So, I'm, I'm easy to find. Just go to Ambrose website, and you can find me.
And I, I'd be interested, too, in being looped in, because I have a special interest in policing in Iowa City, Johnson County.
Okay, cool.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for inviting me, it was my pleasure.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
Chris, if you wouldn't mind staying?
Sure.
I'm going to ask the council for courtesy. I don't know how many public comments. I know Paul has one. Is it okay if I make a 15-minute presentation?
Are you talking public input right now?
Yeah.
We're moving to public input? Okay. Yeah, I was going to go to public input.
Super, because I have a...
That's the next agenda item? But, thank you so much, Chris. I learned a whole lot. I really appreciate it. it. So, now, we're going to go to public input, and Sylvia, you had some?
I do, but I think, Paul, you were, you're having a public comment, right?
I'd like to defer until some of these reports are made to see if they answered my question from the last previous six months.
All right. All right, so I'm going to begin with the first comment received today, October 7th, 2018, from the League of United Latin American Citizens. It's addressed to all of us, the City of University Heights, Iowa City Council. Dear Council members, I write to you on behalf of the League of United American Citizens, LULAC of Iowa. LULAC of Iowa strongly supports the anti-profiling ordinance 235 introduced to council on July 10th, 2018, and endorsed by a coalition of Iowa civil rights organizations. LULAC is the largest and oldest Hispanic organization in the United States. LULAC strongly condemns racial profiling and supports a strong statutory definition of racial profiling, along with the institution of data collection systems by law enforcement. LULAC further strongly supports effort to build trust and cooperation between law enforcement agencies and the Latino community. We believe that anti-profiling ordinance 235 will decrease incidence of racial profiling and will lead to more fruitful cooperation between the local police and the Iowa Latino community. We further believe that a strong and robust ordinance must include provisions to the effect that public notice be given to law enforcement contacts, and that the citizens' review board include members with a background in advocacy. Especially in a political climate that all too, too often demeans the Latino community, it often takes the courageous and innovative actions of local municipalities to remedy systematic deficiencies in the administration of justice. In addition to the downstream positive effects of the anti-profiling ordinance 235, LULAC of Iowa firmly believes that passage of this ordinance itself will signal to our members and to all members of the Latino community that the city council understands the problems of discriminatory policing and is ready to fix it. Mike Reyes, Iowa LULAC State Director.
And there's a second comment.
Yeah, Sylvia wanted someone else to read this, so I guess I volunteer. When I read this on Gmail, I, I thought, this is something that is rarely acknowledged, and I, I was pleased to hear from this gal. It said, "I wanted to write to say that I am in support of ordinance 235 to prohibit discriminatory profiling by the police department. I drive through University Heights fairly regularly because I reside in Iowa City. I appreciate that the area is well-patrolled because it makes me feel safe. Related to this point, I am a white female, so I know that means I receive the best and most respectful treatment by the police. This also makes me feel safe. I realize this is a privilege that I have, and for that, I am grateful. However, I will not be satisfied until everyone receives the same treatment as myself, which is why I support this ordinance. I hope this ordinance will set a positive example for other regions of Iowa." And her signature is sincerely Kyle Rector.
Those were two?
Yeah.
That was it? Okay.
Man of Mayor, I wanted to see if I can, in the interest of Chris Barnum, being able to leave early and listening to this presentation, I wanted to see if I could bring this PowerPoint presentation and present.
Oh, it's his computer?
No, it's my computer.
Oh, and so...
He's stepping into the conversation, he doesn't have our...
Well, I wanted to ask if there was anyone else who wanted to speak during public input? There's a five-minute limit, and would anyone else here like to speak? Not, okay. Okay, so now you want to go to your agenda item, is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
And that would be consideration of ordinance 18235? Is that the agenda item you're talking about?
Um, no, ordinance 235.
That's what I said.
Yes, okay, I heard 18235.
Okay. Is the council okay with going to that now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, super. And also, we have Kevin from NAACP too, so if we can clear one subject, I think that's...
I can hear you.
Yeah, you need to speak closer to the microphone.
Okay. All right, so this is an overview of ordinance 235, and thank you, Chris, for staying. I think this will give you a little bit more of context of where this council came in and how you fit and how your comments fit into the conversation. There's a shadow on this, how do we, how do I?
At the top, you mean?
Yeah. I don't think that's, that's okay, I'll just, just the way it is, right? Yeah, I think that's just the way where the, oh, there it is, thank you.
Thank you, Nate.
Thanks, Nate. All right, discriminatory profiling is a problem. Here in Iowa, just a local example, not too long ago, in July, we had young black men stopped, they were searched, they were handcuffed, and this happened in Des Moines, there was no crime committed, no charges made. But it was a pretty rough situation, and the only way we learned about it is when the driver went to his mom and shared the situation. His mom happened to be connected or knew about Iowa CCI, which is one of the endorsers and supporters of ordinance 235, so they have firsthand information of what it means to be pulled over and how damaging this is to young adults. And, so that's an example in Des Moines. More nationally trending across the nation, we have more research developing statistical tests that show that racial profiling does happen. As a recent example from an institution that's reputable as Stanford, it's a study they did on North Carolina involving a data set of 4.5 million traffic stops in 100 North Carolina cities. They found that, yeah, while blacks and Hispanics are more likely to be searched, those more numerous searches weren't less, are less likely to uncover illegal drugs or weapons than the searches of white or Asian drivers. So, as social science continues to evolve and provide better data methods, we're getting stronger and stronger indicators that racial profiling happens. More closely to home, we have a Des Moines Register investigatory report that revealed that Iowa is second in the nation in racial disparities for drug arrests. Black Iowans are seven times more likely to be arrested for drug possession than white Iowans. If you recall, the ACLU, when they submitted their letter of support for ordinance 235, reminded us of these statistics, along with incarceration rates. So, we are second in the nation in racial disparities, according to reputable sources. But what does all this data mean? It means that, well, you know, black people use illegal drugs, but at similar rates, that while black people use illegal drugs at a similar rates as white people, there's not much of a difference. The white population is that red line you see up there, the black population is the blue line, so there's not much of a difference between the two groups, there's not a big Current state affairs in Iowa, we have lack of protections. No state law in Iowa prohibits discriminatory profiling. And at the federal level, we have ERPA, which was introduced in Congress in 2001, but it hasn't been passed. It's been stuck in the House, and it just hasn't moved. And in 2017, the U.S. Justice Department ended oversight of local police department. Quote, Jeff Sessions said, "Changes to this program will be, will fulfill my commitment to respect local control and accountability." This comment was also noted by Iowa CCI when they wrote to us and warned us that we no longer have federal recourse to, to have investigations made on behalf of a, of a small or even a large city. So, what does that mean after Jeff Sessions' comments? It means that it's up to us to take action. Ordinance 235 came into existence to council on July 10th of 2018, and here's what it called for. It outlaws discriminatory profiling and pretextual stops. Profiling is based, profiling based on suspect descriptions remains totally legal, so our, our officers can continue to do their job. Ordinance 235 trains police officers to prevent implicit bias. It establishes a citizens' review board to independently review complaints. After law enforcement contacts are made, people receive information on the citizens' review contact information, and there's data collection to identify discriminatory patterns that then becomes also publicly available. Minus personal identifiable information, that's all stripped away from that data. So, the timeline of changes to ordinance 235 are as follows. On July 10th, the version one ordinance was supported by the ACLU, NAACP, Iowa CCI, LULAC. Those organizations have years and hundreds of years in combined experience of trending, monitoring, and assisting individuals who are subject to racial profiling, and also to advising communities on how to have better approaches for better outcomes. In August 21, we met again, and no action was taken on ordinance 235. On September 11, we had version number two. If you remember, we had Betty Davis from the NAACP Iowa Nebraska Chapter.
Andrews.
Andrews, I'm sorry, Andrews, Betty Andrews, come to the meeting, and the chief, and NAACP made a tweak to the version number one that resulted in version two. The tweak involved was increase the CRB, which is your citizens' review board, from four, from three members to four, plus the chief. It was important to make sure that we had the same type of numbers that we did, so that you wouldn't end up in gridlock by, by vote, so you wouldn't have a two-to-two tie. Instead, you would have at least the possibility of four-to-one, three-to-two, something to work with odd numbers. So, that's where we left off. We almost had a vote that night, but as I recall, the city attorney presented some legal issues that turned out to be non-issues later on. So, now, we're in October 5th, and version three came to be. Version three is a good-faith effort to incorporate Nick Herbold's suggestions that were provided on October 2nd. And I want to point out that that's 12 weeks after the first version, but nonetheless, good efforts were made to incorporate them into the version two. Version three is not endorsed or reviewed by any outside organization, so I want to clarify tonight that if you had expectations that ACLU, NAACP, Iowa, CCI, or LULAC would have passed or would have commented on this, that is inaccurate. These organizations have not been approached to see if they are still on board with our, with our proposal.
Are you saying you haven't approached them?
I haven't worked, I haven't had some opinion.
Oh, I had reached out, I haven't heard back yet, but I've reached out.
Yeah, I, I have, well, I, I haven't asked for a review of, of the, of the changes. So, my expectation was that because they have forgiven us their organizational standard of approval, it means something. I want people to trust us for not just being brave council people that are trying to do something to fix our reputation and improve our own performance, but that we have the weight and confidence of organizations that know what it means to do the job right. So, I just wanted to let you know that on October 6, more changes were proposed by Nick. On October 8, more changes were proposed by Nick, and they have not even, I haven't even put him in a version four, version five, because the last version, that was good-faith effort, where Nick and I had a holistic conversation of some of the policy implications of these changes, was version three. And so, tonight, I, I want to make sure that all of you know that since you have version three, what has changed? What's been diluted or upgraded? Well, downgraded, a proposal was to downgrade all of these protections into a resolution. After providing Nick with some substantial good information on case law regarding the importance of using the right tool, ordinance versus resolution, we are, I, I'm hoping that that's still the case, Nick, that we're going to do an ordinance on the key elements and a resolution as a companion for all of these other purchases and policy aspirational statements.
Well, to me, there's a couple issues. I mean, one was the form. I don't like throwing everything in a resolution, as we discussed, so that's why I have a separate resolution.
Sure.
In terms of the ordinance, you know, you, you know where I'm at. We've had a lot of communications about it. In terms of the different forms, I mean, when I'm collaborating with somebody, it's very common for me to send back and forth redlined, you know, versions, but I still look at it as something that I want our city attorney to look at, if that's, I mean, our city attorney, I think, has said that he's speaking with NAACP on Wednesday, tomorrow, so that's where I would be on that issue.
Well, what I'm, I'm on the issue is case law speaks for itself beyond what our city attorney has to say or any of the other members that are sisters or brothers-in-laws in the law. A resolution was addressed as, I mean, the use of a resolution was addressed by case law, and I shared that, so I'm comfortable that we're using the two appropriate tools, ordinance and resolution. I'm confident that that's the right level of safe protection we need for this discussion. The next dilution that was proposed or came along, but that is no longer an issue, I don't believe, if I understood you correctly. The second one is nonexistent legal issues brought up. Those are now resolved. There was concern around ADF, which is the peace officer's protection, and as far as, as operation of law, I mean, if when people die, as an example, and you die without a will, by operation of law, state law steps in for intestate, for disposing of your property after death if you died without a will. So, there's, ADF does not conflict, it coexists with this particular ordinance. The next dilution issue that came up was removal of advocacy requirements for the CRB membership. Even version three right now has no advocacy requirement for the CRB, and that's been raised over and over again by independent residents who keep saying, you really can't have a trustworthy CRE if you don't have somebody who at least understands the issues that relate to that advocacy area. So, for example, you have an NAACP member, you may have a LULAC member, you may have a NOW member, et cetera. So, addition of more law enforcement representation in CRB. Right now, we have some, a proposal that wants more law enforcement in that CRB in comparison to the civilians that are in the CRB who have no affiliation. Moreover, the law enforcement person brings in a boatload of experience, and all of these other civilians have hardly any experience to, to qualify to get in there or to work with. So, the other dilution that has happened since July 10th is the CRB can no longer recommend discipline, and we've had conversations around that, Nick. The last one is notices of complaint procedure no longer provided in law enforcement contacts. That was one of the, that was one of the important provisions to protect the individuals who would be impacted by ordinance 235 when there's an enforcement contact.
Talking about business cards versus being on the website?
Yeah, business cards, yeah. That's the one that you proposed, because I know I didn't come up with that. Why are these a problem? Okay, so why are these dilutions a problem? Internet complaints are web-based, posting everything on our website. There's a data, there's a, there's a web, there's a digital literacy divide, and we're told in your first, second paragraph that blacks, Hispanic immigrants, residents of low-income households, rural communities, and the elderly and adults with disabilities have a consistent lack of digital equity based, based on the fact of, you know, race, on gender, on national origin, and, and being included. So, my biggest concern is that we're going to rely on placing notification of, of a very important protection our city provides on the website, a website that hardly anybody knows exists, because no one knows that we're a city. People drive by and think we're Iowa City. Moreover, even if we had a sign out there, finding, presuming that people will navigate our website is just presumptuous. Why don't we just hand out a business card that sounds friendly and encourages people to provide us with feedback for both good and problematic issues? I don't see an issue why we couldn't take a marketing position in that respect and not just make it a, a difficult encounter. The next one is stripping away advocacy background. Well, that happens to be an important way of building trust and accountability in your citizens' review board, and I think you heard that from Chris Barnum tonight, that the most effective ones that he's worked with is when you've had organizations involved. So, complaints will only be made if people trust that the, that the review will be independent and with appropriate expertise. And council still gets a, a final word on any discipline, so I'm not sure where concerns over HR issues came about, because we still get to control the discipline like we've had. And lastly, compatibility with ADF and the Iowa code. It has to coexist. Just because we create an ordinance does not give us a right under Iowa homestead law to overrule other, other state laws, and for that matter, probably the county as well. What do the experts support today? It is, it's a question that some of you have been asking, and residents are certainly asking me. The ACLU, the NAACP, Iowa CCI, LULAC support version number one, that's the one that came on in July. The NAACP supports version number two, which was that tweak that was made at the last council with Nate and with Betty. I presume that other organizations are likely to support this change as it was minor. So, my, my, my next question is, I, I need to get a sense from this council body as to where we stand, because there's too many versions, it's been 120, almost, what, three, three months, four months going? It's been 120, almost, what, three, three months, four months going into four months? And we're, we're not moving this along and it's four pages. It's not complicated. It is flexible. And it would require us to really bring our troops to the, you know, to a higher performance standard, compatible beyond what Iowa City is providing and maybe some of these other Davenport and Dubuque locations. And I don't see that that's incompatible with what we as counselors can do. So it's either we catch up to what Iowa City is doing, or we do better than Iowa City or some of our other surrounding communities. So it's, it's time to lead. And so I want to know tonight, what support is there from you? By a show of hands for versions one or version two?
Well, first...
I'm not going to support a show of hands. I mean, the three of you need to come to us with a single version. That would be my preference. I don't, I've received multiple versions yet this week.
Right, right.
Oh, I haven't circulated, I only circulated one to council. Have you been giving out more?
It is his committee.
Yes, I've been sharing. I hear, I get feedback from a lot of people and I've been trying to keep them updated. I would take issue with a lot of the things you've said, including the timeline that's up there. You'd recall, you didn't provide us with any draft until right before the July 10th meeting. You hadn't shown it to anybody. City attorney had not looked at it. You had not talked to law enforcement about the status quo. So what we did is we gave you feedback. You incorporated it in a very minimal way. There was hardly any changes to your draft. And I understand your position is that you, you want to keep the form that was given to you. My position has been that in this city, with the size of our town, with the unique characteristics, that there are changes that we want to make. And I've been speaking with people on council about those changes, and that's why there've been, you know, there've been changes. And so I don't know if you're trying to be critical of me giving you a lot of red line ideas. It's just kind of bizarre, really, when I look at the timeline, because it's so skewed. And it reminds me a lot of when I see, you know, like, the, the instance we had a couple of months ago, where I saw correspondence with it, with someone in town, that was so inaccurate and had such large misrepresentations in it, that it just gets, it, it makes me wonder, you know, how much time I should spend communicating with you like this? Because I get the sense that it's just going to turn into this thing where you're, you're making a production. What we've been trying to do, what we've been trying, just a second, we gave you a lot of time. What, what we've been trying to do is work on a draft, get, get people's ideas into it. We have, we're working on getting another meeting set up that's going to take place after the city attorney gets the feedback that you requested he get. There's been an email about this, so I don't know why you're being critical of this.
I'll tell you why. I'm going to respond to, to that very quickly.
Are you being critical of the meeting that Steve Ballard is, is that for, for Wednesday or for us wanting to get the feedback from that meeting? I mean, I did everything I could to get a version of my vision of this, which is a resolution that provides the funding that you were not providing in your initial, initial ordinance. I took out for the ordinance what I thought should be in an ordinance, and it seemed like we were pretty close to being on the same page. Now, I have received additional feedback from the chief of police, and that I've integrated. That's what I expected us to have a discussion about, not to have a proposal, you know, a PowerPoint from you that's explaining why we're all, you know, wrong about all this.
No, 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 no. I think you're, I think you're so sensitive to having me, you know, bring up these, this is...
I'm not sensitive. I just want to be efficient and I want to be productive, and I don't want these meetings to go so late.
Characterizing this, characterizing this and making it personal attacks on me is not going to get us there. So let, you're attacking him, Sylvia.
Could, could I make a comment?
It's diluted. I don't think it's diluted. We're making it stronger. We're making it work for our community.
Hold on a minute, because let me, let me make one, one clear, a couple of comments. I have a right to, to address them. Number one, July 10th, that was distributed like any other document is distributed these days. Last night at 10:00 PM or so, you sent the October 8th changes. They came in at 10:00 PM. I was already asleep by then.
He's not asking for a vote on it.
But we've been exchanging things for a while.
The point is, the point is that July was there. August came and went. The only feedback I got were policy remarks with four questions that were possibly legal in nature. But that didn't happen until September 11th, when the city attorney revealed his legal concerns over anything. And it turned out that the legal issue he popped up at the last minute on September regarding penalties wasn't an issue, because ordinances do not need a penalty. And he's researched that and he's provided a good answer that's closing out. So I don't see that as an issue. And I'm reporting that to both the public and to this council. So there's absolutely no, no question as to what information I have and you all have. So I'm just, I'm just equalizing the level of information everyone has. It's certainly not controversial that September 11th, there was a tweak. That's your version two. I'm glad that you're not disputing that, because that's a fact, just like the fact that on October 5th, we ended up with another version. It was a good faith effort. That's not critical of you. It's just saying a good faith effort to incorporate the suggestions that you circulated on October 2nd. That's a fact. You sent out a counterproposal on October 2nd. All I'm saying at the bottom is it's not endorsed or reviewed by any outside organization. And I want to know by a show of hands here tonight, how is the progress of the changes on version three at minimum in comparison to two and one? Where do you guys feel comfortable? Are you ready to vote on either one or two? Or do we continue down version three? Because let me tell you.
Could I make a comment?
Well, let me just finish, because, you know, Nick has made a lot of speculative, you know, outrageous characterizations, and I'm afraid that if I were a male, I probably wouldn't be treated this way. So the, the situation is this, we need to have a serious discussion of where we're going. The ordinance is four pages. It's, it's not difficult. It addresses core areas of what it is that we're regulating, which is traffic stops and pedestrian, pedestrian activity that results in enforcement actions. It establishes training. I mean, who doesn't want to train their staff any better? I'm all for training our staff to be more professional than what they are now. So I, I look forward to that. Number three, creation of a CRB, of a CRB. That's perfectly fine, perfectly legitimate. We have an excellent pool of residents who have been active and contacting many of you to ask for your opinions, your concerns, so that they can help you reason your way to a good conclusion. And the fourth item is data reporting. And that's why Chris Barnum is so important to this conversation. He's the, how do you report? How do you interpret? I want our staff to be super prepared and very able to stand by all of their enforcement actions. I hate it when people come to council asking for dispensations on tickets, because there's a supposition that they did something wrong. And you know what? How many times has Dottie asked to have pictures taken of the enforcement action, you know, the car tires on the lawn or the whatevers, so that we can say, thank you very much for writing and we support our chief? My record to remind all of you so far is that every ticket that has been brought up to council and challenged against the, our PD, I have supported and upheld it. So there's no question that I want our PD to succeed. The question is, do you guys want to see ordinance 235 succeed? And if you do, we need to send out at minimum version three to start working with these organizations to see if they are comfortable with those dilutions that we've made, because they are...
I, could I make a, could I make a comment? It seems to me the principles of discrimination and nondiscrimination are pretty universal and they're pretty clearly stated in federal law. Now, it would seem reasonable to me that the basics are the same everywhere. And I would like to look at Iowa City. I mean, it's, they're our neighbors, they're part of it, we are area four, and many of the things that they have done, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. And I'm especially interested in exploring more about the Citizens Review Board, because those actions need to be clearly delineated and defined. So I would like to check tonight to see how everybody feels on it. I'd like to, to also know what Steve finds out when he talks with, with the agencies tomorrow or the next day.
He's meeting with the legal redress team. So what I would like to do is find out, I think it's a good time to check in with everyone before we move on.
So Dottie raised an issue, and I, we do have feedback from that. When we, and again, I, the fact that you made this a gender issue, I think, is, is really unfortunate, and we, we can discuss that further if you want. But Iowa City does have a Citizens Review Board, as you know. One of the issues we spoke about with Steve was that they have an independent attorney that they have hired to be involved with that board. I mean, these are the financial issues that, you know, we just have to make a...
Well, we might be able to utilize, if we networked with them, we might be able to utilize many of the services that they've already done. There is no point, we are a village.
You're talking about a 2080E, you agree?
Yes, we are a small, small entity, and we don't have high crime. And so I think if we could network with Iowa City, it would be to our benefit and to their benefit, as, I mean, we are an entry into the city, into Iowa City. And it's, it's part of, I think, being a good neighbor. And not that we should pattern it completely, but many of the things, I mean, I know Troy Kelsey very well. I worked with him. And, you know, these are, these are very sensible, well-grounded, mature officers and citizens that are involved. And I, I think, you know, that we need to get the definitive language and, you know, then decide who has how much power. If we're going to give out cards introducing the officers when they stop, fine, you know. We may need to tweak it a little bit for university highs, but the law is the law.
The law, well, the law is the law, and all of these civil rights organizations have explained to you, and so does LULAC tonight, that there's no federal law protecting police enforcement racial profiling. I mean, it just doesn't exist, because it exists for, there are other actions, such as employment discrimination and...
That's, that's the point, so that we need to be...
Not for law enforcement. And that's, and you know, this ordinance doesn't...
We need to understand how to apply it.
That's right, yeah.
And so you want to adopt it tonight? Is that how?
Well, I want to know, just by a show of hands, so I can understand. I haven't had the benefit of talking to anybody. So I'm doing that now. So why don't we, I'd just like to know, where's the show of support for, say, version two?
As I have already said, I am ready to move forward with this as soon as the three of you, Nate, Nick, and Sylvia, agree on a single draft. And Sylvia, the question you need to answer as the finance chair is how are we going to pay for the costs incurred by this plan?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. But I want to make sure that we are, we settle the question on version three, because I think that's our good faith efforts of the most, least controversial, least controversial ones? And send it out.
I, I mean, again, I don't know why you're making this an adversarial issue, you know...
I'm asking right now. I'm just asking you a question.
The answer is that we, we have worked on the draft. And, I mean, first of all, is, is there a gender issue, do you think, here?
Initially, when you started characterizing me, describing the issues, I thought, so yes, I perceived...
But, but don't you feel that, you know, I sent you an email detailing, do you remember this, detailing you the concerns I have about this approach that you take?
Which one? Version three or version two?
The email, that, the email about the, this, this entire approach to this misrepresenting things and then taking a lot of time...
You know, no, 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 you're taking out of context one comment where I have an opinion and, and trying to force me into an opinion outcome bucket. What I told the resident is, is we didn't, we didn't get, we got free money involved. That was the free money that you're talking about, correct? It's a lump sum distribution that I was alluding to. The difference between accelerating payment of $50,000 over the course of five years or taking it now in a lump sum. My position is that we walked away from free money. That's not a mischaracterization of anything, and you should have asked me more specifically. I, I don't know if you have or haven't.
I think it's clear that we're not ready to vote on this tonight.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not ready to vote, because I, like, like, like you know, you know, I received additional feedback from, from the chief of police. I integrated that into my latest version.
I don't know which one that is. That's the problem.
It's the one that's attached to my, to my report for tonight.
And that doesn't reflect a cooperative, made, Virginia, it's just telling us we have to hammer this out.
Well, I heard Dottie say she's, you're not ready to vote tonight. You want to check out more information?
Well, I would like to reach out to Iowa City and my connections there and, and find out how they're implementing it, because I think we could learn a great deal from them.
Absolutely.
And, and we aren't a unique entity.
No, I mean, that's how we learned about Chris Barnum, from that. Totally agree. So, but implementation, I'm there. But we can't get to implementation if we can't talk about structure. And that's what ordinance 235 has, Virginia, is the structure around how you roll over or roll out your details.
Okay, why don't we start with, with the original, 235, and put something together?
No, it's because we're at version three, Dottie. Take a look at October...
I know, but version three doesn't, all of you aren't on board with version three.
Well, we haven't had a chance to connect over six, October 6th changes or October 8th changes. I mean, I, I've been waiting and I've been very receptive to feedback, and, you know, we need, my, my...
Is there one tonight that we can look at and...
Yeah, you can look at version three. I just want to know, can I, I, I'm going to take version three out to the organizations, is what I would like to do, because I suspect that versions from October 6th and October 8th are so problematic, are so problematic and so far away from the intent of the July version, that they, they just, even if you try to say that we're tailoring it to our camp...
So what problems do you have with version three, Nick?
I mean, there, the change, the changes that I made, I thought, you know, I thought we would be discussing those tonight rather than having a proposal from Sylvia seeming to, you know, using the words like diluted. We've changed, you know, there's, there's changes, like the, the card thing. As she pointed out, I brought up the idea of the business card, having talked to Nate about it, but we've also, you know, he's had further thoughts about it. We, you know, we talked about other ideas. So I, I'm not claiming to have, you know, a position that, that I can't move from. I just want to have an efficient way to have a discussion about this.
Well, then, we need...
I haven't had one on the October 6th or October 8th, Nick. I've tried, I've tried sending you to the best of my ability comments, and that's no substitution for having a conversation. So the last good, healthy conversation where you got everything that you asked for, and I, I saw that the language still remained with the integrity of July 10th model.
I really don't think, this discussion is not helpful. When we're, when we're exchanging red line versions, you know, the question is, are we at a point where we, you know, can, can bring something to council?
No.
I'm not. And I, I mean, that's why I think this has been a waste of time. I'm, I'm wanting to meet with the city attorney after he talks, you know, to the people...
What are we meeting with the city attorney?
Does, does the other council want to meet, hear what Steve has to say after he meets?
I would like him to, to circulate that to all of us as, as a, as a confidential document, all of us, not just Nick. Because I'm very interested...
Do you agree, Lisa, in Virginia?
Yes.
What's confidential about that conversation?
I don't know why it would be...
If there's someone sitting here waiting while we're all going back and forth, does he need to?
I think, I think...
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
I'm sorry about that.
No, it's, it's okay.
So the process is, now that Steve's going to meet tomorrow, right? Could you kind of review that a little, Steve, from your legal report?
Yeah, so at the September meeting, I was directed to talk with the representatives of the ACLU and NAACP with respect to the version of ordinance 235 that was, was presented to the council then. And I did make contact with those folks, and they weren't able to talk with me. We're going to have a conference call. Weren't able to have that until tomorrow. I told them, gee, that's unfortunate, because our meeting's tonight, but that's, that's what the calendar provided. So that's what we're going to do. So I'm going to talk with them. I've got a bunch of stuff I want to ask them about, and I'll let you know what they say. I'll be happy to make notes and circulate them. I would ask the question, as far as I know from my convers, my initial conversation with David Walker and Russell Lovell, is that they had, I think, the original version of ordinance 235. And if we're, if we're on to version three, does anyone know if they have any other versions of this?
Why don't we start with...
No, I haven't made any contact with them. That's the point. That's why I'm saying that we're making all sorts of dramatic changes away from the July 10th model language, which is very, very simple.
Why don't we take the original?
They already have it.
That Steve will be talking with them about. And he can circulate it. If we need to have a special meeting, we could meet for an hour or so, you know.
I don't know what Steve is meaning about, is, what are you meaning about, Steve? But maybe we're better served if you just circulate what it is that you're meaning about. You have an idea of your, your conference outlines.
You just, you want to repeat it again?
Well, I mean, that's, it's the, sort of the email that I sent you, not, some time back, I want to talk with them about a variety of things. I want to talk to them about, you know, the Citizen Review Board portion of the ordinance. I want to talk with them about, you know, what I see as some issues when, when the ordinance says... I want to talk with them about, you know, what I see as some issues when, when the ordinance says that, you know, an officer is engaging in a profiling discriminatory practice. If, if the officer's conduct is based on any degree on actual or perceived, you know. I, I mean, that's, that seems to me to have some pretty big issues with it. So if somebody says, I perceived the officer pulled me over for this reason. What are, what the ordinance says is that's good enough, it doesn't matter if that's true. It's just if you perceive it, maybe that's what the council wants to enact. Those are some things that I want to talk with these, these folks about.
Well, go ahead.
I mean, the list of, of protected classes, if you want to call it that. Professor Barn, Barnum talked about race. I think that's about the only one color, I guess, maybe ethnicity. But I, I have some question that I'd like to, I'd like to discuss related to some of these other classifications, gender identity. So somebody, somebody says, I think you pulled me over because I, because I identify as a man and the officer says, I, you know, I didn't, I don't know what you were, you know. And then, and then the ordinance says it doesn't matter what the true, what the actual thing is, it's just what was perceived. So those are among the issues I want to talk about and I have, I do have a list. It's the, pretty much the list I sent to you, Sylvia.
And what I'd like to see is, is if we implement the checklist that Iowa City has, how much information is that going to provide us that we need?
Right, it gives us, so to answer your question.
Just down to basics.
Right, Iowa City tracks and Nate can speak to that and I've already spoken to their sergeant. They track all of these indicators.
Yeah, and they have, it's, it's a beautiful screening device, I think.
So there's consensus from the council that they want to hear from Steve. And you're going to report back to everyone, it doesn't have to be confidential. Report back to everyone what you find and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, I'd like to tie it up before next month.
I do too.
So why don't we have a special, we can have a special meeting?
I'm getting concerned, we're pushing into November and we have people traveling for Thanksgiving and then December, we're going to be in budget session.
I mean, from talking with, with, with council, I guess, the, the budget side is what I think there's the most unknowns on. You know, where, you know, if we're going to do this, I think we need to fund it, but we don't know in the budget where it's coming from. I know in your edits, it said the general fund, but I.
But if we bootleg onto Iowa City and, and feed it into the, the contract, the.
2080.
Software that we're doing, it might cost us only a couple thousand.
And not only that, but you know, you're, there are line items in the budget that, that may, you know, do have some pork in them. And if we are judicious in how we use those resources, you free up those, those dollars at the end of the year. My point is, let's explore some of those areas so that you can build in projects for either sewer inspections like Virginia wants to do from a long, a quarter ago and all the way down to purchasing the new software and getting the training and getting the, and getting the related ordinance 233 cost down. But it means we cannot be blowing up some of our line items and, and they fluctuate. So I can't make a prediction, we've, we've done our best predicting what we thought we would spend, but.
How much is in the general fund, Sylvia?
I don't know at this point, I have to look at the, actually, Lori, can you answer that question? She's here. Yeah, she'd need your treasurer's report.
How about we, we move on, we go to, when we go to the mayor's report and we're getting dates. We look at dates then, all in one, and then, because I hear consensus that council wants to wait till Steve speaks about this. Get his report.
But that will be, you know, within the next few days.
I know, and then we'll put down a date and see if council wants to do a work session, a special meeting on this subject before November or in November. Okay, so we'll go on to
Josiah. Just lie on me.
Dottie's committee report for streets and sidewalks.
Yeah, Josiah has his report too. Do you want to do that first or should I?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so second and third pages of his report is my report, which I was instructed to do and work with Josiah, which we have done. And so I have managed to pull this in under 21,000. So it will be 19,910 for the first phase and that's, that's tearing it all off.
Sylvia, did you want to get this stuff back up on the screen?
What stuff? I'm not doing, I'm not tracking the meeting tonight.
Oh, I thought you were.
No, it's right here.
I only brought my thunder.
Okay, that's fine, I just thought people might want to see it.
So then there'll be a balance remaining of 1,090 to add to next year's portion. And you can see what the demo, demo, demolition site is, removing the shelter slab, sidewalk, oil light, footing, cap, the whole thing. Cap the conduits, remove the fountain, mark that and the bike rack. Then we backfill and seed to get through the winter, bury the water meter and backflow devices. The future items are the bench, the shelter, the drinking fountain and the bike rack. And Jim Vasco made a very reasonable bid for the demolition for 5,300. So we've just broken it down here so that you can see what the construction costs for the, for the base before we put anything on it. Because our project is so miniscule compared to the enormous amount of construction that's being done in Iowa City, it's exceedingly difficult to get anybody's attention or to, you know, even get a estimate. But I have the estimates that are stated here and I would, you know, just like to, to have this approved so that I can begin to negotiate a contract. Because we have to anticipate for next spring so that we aren't shoved to the side again. So, and then the picture is just of the walkway, the pavers and the breakout there for the bench and eventual shelter. So I have submitted what you requested and I guess we're ready to go ahead.
I don't even know what to say.
Well.
This is not a new plan under $20,000, this is just $20,000 of the old plan.
It's tearing it off, you have to tear off the crap before you build anything. I mean, basic construction, you have to demolish it.
But this is $20,000.
Yes, read it.
Shelter, there's no shelter, there's no bench.
No, read it, dear. Look, look, read, read what this involves.
Dottie, we can't waste any more of our time here or Josiah's time between meetings on this.
No, that's why.
When you keep coming to us with the same plan.
Virginia, we have a question, didn't we, and I thought this was Nick too, I thought Nick's idea was economy of scale. So we, she had some bid for just cleanup that was like at 12, 15,000 and I thought you guys increased it to 20.
Yeah, I got 20.
No, we had a proposal for just cleaning up and doing minimal things that was what, five to $6,000. And I think what we had talked about was doing still minimal things.
And keeping this at 20, 20,000, but this is 20,000 to tear this out and then we still have.
And then we have nothing there.
We have 50,000 coming in.
Then we have, so that's not what I understood from last meeting, that's.
The entire problem here all along is that we don't want to spend $50,000 on a 2,000 square foot park.
Well, I thought that was the understanding from the, from Jim and Greg in the beginning. Where are you going to put it?
That is not the understanding that this council has been directing you towards all along.
Wait a minute, but then we just adopted minutes and in the minutes on page two it says, motion by Maher, second by Herbert, to authorize city engineer and council member Maher for funding up to 21,000 to remove Triangle Park with stipulation they provide to the council at the October meeting. You all said 21, now you're telling her five and six thousand.
It doesn't say remove Triangle Park, it says renovate Triangle Park. The entire renovation is supposed to fit within $21,000. It's not supposed to have this big list of deferred items for the future and so.
50,000 is what we're getting for the park. Okay?
It's what we're getting for general green space improvements.
For the park, as I understand it, because part of the reason that we are.
You can argue with me all night, but you do not have, you do not have consent of this council.
I'm just going to call Jim up to speak to it then.
I want to know what, Nick, what were you thinking when you seconded the motion? Because there's clarification of intent here needed.
Yeah, I mean, I, I thought we were going to try to get this done, this whole thing done for 21,000. I, that's what, that's what I thought we were talking about.
I'm willing to give this one more shot, Dottie, if you will take anybody up, up here with you as a committee member the next time you take Josiah's time up with this, so that you can bring back something that the council will approve. I don't know how, you don't understand.
Josiah, and I worked on this, I've, I've, I got a wonderful bid from Jim. The problem with that dump that is called a Triangle Park, besides the Vision Project saying this needs to be cleaned up along with Melrose scape, is that we are, as you drive down Melrose, it is ugly. Part of what we want to do and the builders would like to do is clean up that area, that commercial area there, which is right contingent and contiguous to the hotel. And the way it looks now, it's, it's absurd, I mean, it looks like a shelter for.
Can I have a clarification about what money we have? I'm hearing a lot of different numbers. I mean, the issue I had with Sylvia earlier is that she was telling someone we gave away, I think, $30,000 or something.
No, 50, we walked away from free money.
Walked away from 50, I don't think that was true that we walked away from 50,000. But can someone speak on the budget side of this, like what?
Yes, I can speak to it and I'll tell you here, contractually, where do we stand? When one university, when the Marriott Hotel entered into the final stages of their PUD agreement, they gratuitously gave $50,000 to the city of University Heights as a goodwill, good luck with your green space, but your green space.
And that was the only, and that was the green space that.
That's right, and they talked about Triangle Park as being an immediate area of application because the hotel is coming, the beautification of that area, along with Olive Court Street revitalization. Fix up what looks tired, worn out, disgusting, fix it. Okay, with that in mind, the structure of that payment is 20,000 in year one, which is 2019, 10,000 the next year, 10,000 the following year and 10,000 the next year for a total of 50,000, $50,000. At the last council meeting, I told you and I shared with you my, my opinion, which was not a crazy opinion, and that is, that it made sense to ask for that money upfront called a lump sum distribution. You get it in your retirement when you cash out, lump sum distribution unless you want an annuity. My point is, it's more valuable to have $50,000 in 2019 or 2020 because you can get your project done and move on. And you're not haggling over 10,000, 10,000.
So we haven't given $50,000 in free money away?
They gave us.
They gave us.
But we haven't walked away from it, like you would say.
No, but I'm having trouble.
Away from it.
I'm having trouble getting it.
Distribution of 50,000, we did, because that night you all voted it down. Consensus was no lump sum distribution, period. Virginia specifically said that she wanted it distributed over the course of one, two, three, four years.
Ration it out.
For a $68,000 total cost at that time.
No, 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 but we're not, well, just.
We, we, we cut it down and we reduced it.
That's all I'm commenting on, so.
But we haven't given away the free money, like you said, so it's still there.
That question, I think.
Because you weren't honest about it, but we haven't done this, so we have.
It was part of the conditional.
So everyone, is everyone on the same page? We have, Jim has $50,000 coming over a number of years.
I still have it.
You still have it, we haven't given it away and you don't care what the timeline is in terms of it?
We walked away, we've given it away.
I agree, the original agreement was 20, 10, 10 and 10.
Can you come over here and say that, please, so people can hear you?
Or there's.
Yeah, so my recollection is the original agreement was 20, the first year and then 10 for three succeeding years. And, yeah, we could probably revisit that and, and structure it some other way if you wanted to. I mean, from, from Greg and my standpoint is we, we've got a lot of upfront costs in the hotel, so we were trying to defray that, you know, but.
And you had, you had mentioned that you could, you know, the, you can do some of this work. Do you have the time now to do it as opposed to later or is?
That's the point, I just mentioned 5,300 that Jim can do because he's got all the equipment and everything onboard down the street.
We, we're in the process of doing street repairs and, and site work right now, so I have a lot of equipment two blocks away. So, and I looked at Josiah's plan, it's very accurate. I, I walked through the site and we researched that where the plumbing was and the, the water, sewer, electrical. His plan is very accurate from everything I can see, so I agree with that and his numbers are very accurate. We, we got slightly lower than the demolition costs just because, like I say, we're, we're close, we've got all, all our equipment right there. So the only part I really gave a solid number on right now is the demolition at 5,300. And I got some, I got some verbal numbers from some other contractors on concrete work and, and I'd have to go over that with Josiah to make sure, because All American Concrete gave me a price and, and the guy that we're using for streets down where we're working gave me a price, so. But he didn't, I don't have a, a price specific to this project, I just have general square foot prices, so.
Can this be done yet, this fall?
You got about probably a month and a half worth, I mean, demolition I could do easy, I mean, that would only take a couple days. Getting these other contractors onboard, we, I couldn't say exactly right now if I could get concrete work done, but you probably have about a month and a half of, of potential concrete work given. But, but the weather's been so terrible here lately, it's hard to do anything.
And people are so busy because of the, all the other construction.
Yeah, although I do have, I do have a couple guys that would react fairly quickly, I think. And All American is pretty busy now, but the other guy I've been using, I think, could, could handle it, so. But again, there, we need to work things out with Josiah and get his approval on everything and, and, you know, get, on the contracts and, and the scope of the work and, and exactly what we're doing. I didn't, I didn't really review the plans a lot more from the demolition end. I mean, I just looked at everything to see that it looked like it was, was exactly what's there and, and like I say, the plans are very accurate, so I think we could, we could probably bid things out if you wanted to. Whether or not you could, I, I think you could potentially still get everything done before, you know, frost. It would just depend on, you know, the council.
Because it's so late, we've delayed and delayed and this is what we have.
I don't know that you could get brickwork done, that's, that's, that would be the big thing. You might be able to get your concrete poured and, and, and get it ready for brickwork, but, so. If that's the direction everybody wants to go, then, you know, I, I could go a little further. Like I say, at this point, the only thing I've addressed specifically is the demolition and, and that's a solid price on that and, and, you know, we could do that. I, I haven't taken it any further where I could give you exactly accurate numbers that would be ready for a contract, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I wanted to just clarify one thing with the budget and, you know, with the developers bringing this money forward. It's that, yes, they brought it forward and they said, we do this for the park, but it's always council decision on what they do with the money. It's not them saying you have to use it for this park, it's council decision on what you do with that money.
I mean, I was, I was hoping we could get the park done for the 21, but maybe, I mean, maybe that's, I don't know. I don't know if that's possible or, I mean, I was looking for a scaled down plan just to see what that would be like. I thought that's what we were doing and I'm not being critical.
Still have not seen a scaled down plan, all I have seen is a portion of the other plan, I just, I don't understand.
Dear, you're not going to put, you're going to tear off the. Dear, you're not gonna put, you're gonna tear off the shelter. You're gonna have nothing but a pile of concrete crap. And then you're gonna put a bench in there? I mean, it's absurd.
Why does this need to be the Taj Mahal?
And you've gotta take that fountain out.
The sidewalk looks fine. The pad that the shelter's on is crap. The sidewalk looks fairly nice.
So, I don't hear consensus from council. What, on this plan?
Make an offer. I don't know. Like, how much longer are we gonna keep beating our head against the same rock?
Yeah, there's nobody that...
I guess, just trying to be pragmatic here. We've got, so if we did this now, we would potentially have just kind of concrete sitting there over the winter. And I, again, this is a value judgment, so whether that looks better over the winter or whether it looks better just to, I guess, come up with a plan and do it all at the same time. I, you know, and again, I'm not saying that, that 21,000, if it can't be done for 21,000, maybe that's how it is. But I guess I'm a little concerned about doing it a piece at a time, just to have, have it kind of partially unfinished for, you know...
It's gonna cost more that way, and...
How long are you gonna have the equipment here? Like, is it into next spring, we could potentially be doing this?
Or a year and two months.
Okay, so this is...
A year and two months? Okay.
So, Nick, that only pushes it up to 30,000, though. So, just FYI, and to get a replacement fountain, I think, is 8,000.
10, 10.
So, I mean...
The fountain that will be like the one in Tower Court, and it's 10.
The discussion last month that I heard was, some of the council didn't want to rip out things unless it was gonna be replaced.
That wasn't my, my understanding was, you have 21,000, and you figure out what you can do for 21,000. And I did. And it's beautiful, and it's reasonable. It's a smart business plan. It's not a, you know, kindergarten thought process.
One of my concerns that I have, and I'll just chime it in, and it's not even a concern, is that I was worried that we would start adding lovely things to the area and then have to undo that work later. That was like one of the big concerns, because it's double work. It's a double expense. And so, I'd rather see an area cleared, capped, and sealed, and prepared for whatever other phases come along. Otherwise, we're just constantly gonna be nickel-and-diming this project, and it just won't get done.
Maybe the council would like to form a committee of what...
That would be great.
No, that isn't gonna work. That isn't gonna work.
To, to express what they'd like to see and do some...
I just think we're, I mean, it's...
And maybe even have some citizens on that committee.
No, no. We need to get this done. I don't want to go massage it and massage it. I'd like Jim to go ahead...
We have a month and a half left.
I'd like, well, it's probably gonna freeze within a month, I'd say. But if we could get Jim to get the bids on the other items that he was talking about. Because, you know, I guess what you all don't understand is that here we have builders who are working within two blocks. They are being good neighbors, and they're willing to, to get bids, find the players, and get this done. And it will be done quickly. It will be done well, because they're doing our hotel as well. And it will look like it's all together. And remember, a nickel today isn't a nickel tomorrow. So, you can procrastinate as long as you want, but it's gonna cost you more next year than it'll cost you this year. So...
Does council want to move ahead with this project that Dottie has?
I guess what I'd like to ask is, would they permit Jim to come back with the total cost of the construction, so that we have that?
I understand, but first they have to accept the project.
Well, I did what you told me to do, keep it at 21, and I kept it, and I got it at 19, so...
I guess I'm still unclear, because I laughed with the impression of cleanup. We're up to 21.
Cleanup was six.
No, no.
That was my understanding.
You can't clean up that...
Yeah.
Yeah, that was...
Josiah's estimate was 6,000.
Mine was six, roughly.
And their bid's 53.
Yeah, but cleaning up is tearing the whole thing off, Virginia.
So, we have to keep moving on with this, because it's...
I want to see a plan with $6,000 on cleanup and $15,000 in amenities. And I don't want the amenities to be concrete.
You want, you want what? You want what?
What I want here is $6,000 in cleanup and $15,000 in amenities, and I don't want the only amenities left to be concrete.
Well, then, we're not gonna, it won't happen.
I'm sorry, I don't...
You're gonna have...
What do you, how do you, how do you see this going? You're gonna keep bringing us the same plan and think we've changed our minds? I mean, Dottie, you're gonna have to work with somebody.
I'm doing the cleanup for...
Pick any person at this table and work with them to come up with a plan and bring it next month.
But, but you're all not, you are so far removed from the real world and business thought. You can't just, so 5,300 is demolition of everything. They're gonna take off everything, and they're gonna just cap the water and cap, and cap the electrical. So, there you are, okay? Then you have to begin to add the items that you have listed here, in order to just get the basic playing field, so that then you can go in and put, put the footings for the bench and the shelter, the water fountain, and the bike rack. And that will take more money, of course. Otherwise, you know, leave it the way it is.
Yes, please.
I guess the suggestion I would make is, if you let me work with Josiah, I will bid the whole project from start to finish. And I mean, it's, will take a little bit, but, but that way, you would know exactly what the whole project's gonna cost, and then you would have it ready, so you could do the demolition, and maybe not potentially right now, move on, but in spring or whenever, we would be able to finish the whole thing complete. You know exactly what it would cost. And, because I don't really know, I only looked at the demolition part of it. But if you want, then I could give you an itemized bid, and I know Josiah kind of worked up his own numbers, but, you know, we could actually bid it out, price it out, get everybody, you know, with written contracts, so that you would know exactly where you're going from start to finish. I mean, to me, that...
Can I ask you, Jim, just from a curious, curiosity? Because I was approaching this from a very linear perspective and in terms of a timeline.
Yeah.
Is that because you're worried about removing infrastructure and addressing infrastructure first, and then adding whatever else gets added, whether it's amenities or replacements?
Yeah, I mean, sometimes when you, if you pour this stuff and you leave it sit over winter, you know, you, you may not have the same result when you get done. I mean, I, I prefer to, you know, start and then just completely go to the end. But, but again, you've got the Vision Project coming up, so you have to coordinate everything, which, which I think Josiah has already done. I mean, we stopped the sidewalk short of the Vision Project. But more in keeping with that is, I'd like to know really what the final number is gonna be, so that you're not saying, "Well, we thought it was gonna be 50,000. It's 80,000," or, and I, like I say, I didn't look any farther than just the demolition at this point, so...
Well, the numbers, yeah, the numbers that we've listed here for pavers and, you know, the, well, actually, most of these numbers are part of, of the demolition and the capping and all.
Yeah, the, well, the, yeah, the demolition at 5,300 was for pulling up concrete. There's a buried, buried water line there that needs to be put into a vault, because we're gonna put it flush with the, with the ground now. There was an electrical to cap off. There are some footings that I know are in there. Bring in black dirt and kind of put everything back together. So, and then, then the next phase would be pouring, pouring the sidewalk back and getting that ready for the, the pavers. And then beyond that is things like the, the bench and the drinking fountain, and, but, again, like I say, the only thing I have exact numbers on is the demolition, so... But if you want me to go further than that, I certainly can.
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea of getting the whole thing bid out. I think the question that we need direction on is just, you know, because we've had an estimate of everything before. It was just higher than, I think, the majority wanted to go, and so then we were trying to scale it down. And that, I think, is the question, is, you know, it sounds like you may be more competitive than the general numbers we were getting before, but I think it's still a trade-off of what we want in this park. And I, I like the mayor's idea of a committee to, to look at the trade-offs here and maybe get someone from, you know, the community or people from the community involved, if that's what the rest of the...
We had that with the Vision Project. You see, this, we've gone through this for a year.
Thank you, Jim.
Jim, here, take this, this is, these are Josiah's numbers, so you can look...
I think going through this process, even with Jim helping out like this, is gonna, even if we have a special meeting where we, council can decide, the window is gonna be closing really quickly. And I think we have until early spring to do some of this and have a committee and look it over.
Well, I'll tell you, the other thing is, is if we, if we start early spring, which, since we're right down the street, we could pull everything up early spring, too, which is another option. And then just continue on and finish out, which, you know, that, that way, if we have everything priced out, and, and if I get the guys early in spring before they start other projects, then we have a lot better chance of, of getting contractors onboard. And we have a lot of clout with them right now, since, with the project we're doing. I mean, we've got a lot of people that we could pull in.
Well, in terms of the time that you need right now...
Right.
...to negotiate these contracts, to figure out the costs with Josiah and negotiate the contracts, about how much time do you need?
Well, probably two weeks.
Okay, so, see, we don't have time for neighborhood input and all of this. They did this with the Vision Project.
Just pick somebody, just talk to Mary, who lives right there.
I just have you get the bidding and bring it...
Well, you're gonna have to do it anyway. I mean, you're gonna have to bid it out, no matter what you do, so you might as well...
I know, I just don't know if the council has consensus on these exact plans. And you're gonna be bidding it out, and then we're gonna say, "Okay, you did all that work. Now, we're changing the plan."
Well, but you can't change the, the way we put it on the little triangle.
Right, the 5,300 is probably correct.
Well, he bid it, so it must be.
I mean, the 6,000 that Josiah said.
But see, then, the other costs are the things that Josiah figured out would be involved.
It's very easy to see what's there and to bid the demolition.
Yeah.
Now, if the, if the plans change, then, yeah, that's...
That's what I'm saying. I think this council's not in agreement with the plans.
Okay.
But what are you gonna change? But what do you mean by changing plans? The design, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, the design. I don't hear consensus about the design.
I thought we...
Well, in either case, I think it would be good to give you guys the number...
I know you're frustrated, but I'm not hearing that.
On what you have right now. I mean, we could give you a number. It's, it's not gonna cost anything to bid what you have right now. And that would give you an idea of where you are. Then, then if you see it's low and you want to enhance it, you could make it fancier, or you can, you know, down, well, I don't know if you can downgrade it anymore, but...
I mean, that's really the question. You know, right now, we have a bench, a shelter, drinking fountain, and bike rack. And, you know, and the, the rest of these seem pretty bare-boned. I think pavers, you know, you might do concrete instead of pavers, just do...
It looks crappy, that's the point.
We have a bike rack there. Like, we don't need to replace the bike rack. It's sitting on concrete.
Oh, it's so gross.
You don't have to take that out. You can just leave it the way it is.
No, but the point is, we want to put lipstick on the pig.
So, you're, you're a plumber, so you could look into maybe the drinking fountain. That would be something you could look into.
I've already got some feelers out on that, trying to find you one a little cheaper. At the very least, we would be able to probably save 30% just, just through our sources of getting the drinking fountain.
The one, the one we like is the one in Tower Court, which is...
The one that's got the little dog water thing on it?
Iowa City has those all over their parks.
Yeah, right. And they, they may have one they want.
Plumber Supply.
Yeah, Plumber Supply, so, so we'd get, I mean, we'd get some discount, which we can pass on. And, so, like I say, I'll go ahead and, well, if it's okay to work with Josiah, I might have a few questions for him, but I'll go ahead and at least bid what you have right now. It won't cost anything. Just, we'll just put it out, put it out there, and that, get some solid numbers, anyway.
Yeah.
And then you can...
Does council agree to that? To go ahead with that?
I mean, if Jim's up for doing the bid, I appreciate you spending the time, you know, the unpaid time to do that. I, I think that it would be nice if council, if we're not, if we're not gonna set, start a committee, if we just could make some decisions, you know, like, do we want a bike rack? Do we want a shelter?
Oh, forget it.
I mean, that, that seems to be what it's kind of boiling down to, isn't it? Like, do we want these things and...
What in the hell do you want? Pardon me. You know, do you want anything there? Do you want to just, you know, leave it the way it is? It looks like, you know, well, I won't even use the words.
Leaving things, what, what you're talking about, bike rack, like, we just did a big patio area for Corville, and the bike rack just bolts down through the brick. I mean, we, we put it on six months after we finished the patio. And the same thing with the benches. The benches aren't installed yet, and those are coming in in a couple of weeks, so, you know, some of this stuff could be added if, if you need to downsize the budget initially. I mean...
So, you're gonna work with Josiah for, before the November meeting?
Yeah.
And then, this might happen like in early spring, because then you could get the contractors, subcontractors lined up.
Yep. Yeah, I think, I think that's...
And we'll see what some of the bidding is.
Right. And then, in the meantime, if you're looking at the, at the print and decide to change something, I mean, most of, most of our numbers are coming in by square foot prices. So, I mean, if you increase your concrete, you know, 10 or 15 square feet or something, they just, it'd just be, they'd add on that square footage. So, you know, I, I think, once, once you get a number here where you know exactly where we're going, then, you know, you've got at least something to work with, so...
I appreciate you wanting to help us out with this.
We can do that. And, again, I think, even if you do it early spring and start, we would be able to complete it fairly rapidly, just because we'd have all these people on site. And in the meantime, I mean, you can decide if you want to pull stuff out right now. Even the demolition, the only thing, the only thing about the demolition is, we've got to move this water line. And that, I don't want, you know, we don't want to do in freezing weather, so... But other than that, everything else...
I don't want any demolition until we have a plan approved.
Yeah.
We've given up on a committee? We've given up on other...
Well, I don't know. That's your decision.
I would, I've already said I'd be in favor of a committee, but I think if we don't, we still, as individual council members, can see what Jim's prices are. We can make our pitch about, you know, each of us can say, you know, what we want. There's gonna be a majority, you know, agreeing potentially to something, and then we just go with that.
Can we just do a round robin of what initially people want to do? Like, just gut reaction right now?
I can tell you, I just wanna start off with infrastructure cleanup. If twenty thousand buys us infrastructure cleanup and setting that area up for the next stage, let's do it.
I'd wanna have a full plan and not do it halfway. I mean, I understand that point, but just do it, I'd wanna just do it all the way through once we have a plan. And that's kind of what Jim, I think, was, was saying.
If we can nail people down-
Lisa, what do you wanna do? Lisa, what's your gut reaction to where you're at right now?
I wanna have a plan, but we seem to be just, like Virginia said, we keep sticking with this-
No, it was, it was, it was sixty-
...basic idea, and maybe there's, maybe there's something else we could do.
Well, we also spent a year in the Vision project, and people came up-
Well, and we threw that out.
When?
Well, we didn't throw out anything.
We planned a bid. I mean, look at- Well, does that mean that the whole Vision program is not on your question? I wanna know, because the whole Melrose streetscape is based on-
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that if you look on the website and you look at the two plans, they're pretty much totally different, and-
That's all I'm saying. Well, that's because the council wouldn't approve sixty-eight thousand, which was understandable.
And so, Virginia, you're in favor of going ahead and getting these bids and then re-looking at it? And really, it'll be a project for early spring. And then, like he said, things are in square footage, so if council says, I don't want pavers, I want concrete, I want more pavers, less concrete, it's a square foot price. Okay, so we'll go ahead like that? And, uh, and not have a committee?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Jim, for helping us out. And, uh-
Same session next month.
Uh, Josiah, did you have anything else?
No, he had a report, though.
Yeah, I know, that's why I'm asking you before I go to him.
Should go through it, since I sent it to you like an hour ago. So, thank you. So, I'll just update you on a couple of things. The fiber project that Iowa City's doing, they are behind schedule. They've had a lot of rain, obviously. I think I mentioned last month, they've had problems with their bore under the railroad that failed. So, I think they're close. I know that they've done some restoration work at some of the spots, but there's, there's spots and there's people here who have big holes in their front yard. I'm trying to find out from them exactly what that schedule is. Got photos of it today, sent it to them, and, uh, there was construction, not construction, but, uh, work around the Golf View Avenue storm intake at the end of last week. It's the one that had the big void under it. Basically, the summary is, they dug it out, we inspected the box and the pipe connection to see, like, is there a, is there a noticeable, obvious hole or something that water's getting out or soil's getting in? They could not find anything. We did not, like, go and, like, dig up under the box and under the street and start undermining that, but everything that we could see was okay. So they backfilled around the pipe with rock, some flowable concrete under the box to support it, and then backfilled it. They still have restoration, restoration work to do, and there's actually a drainage hole that's opened up, I saw today, so I'm gonna talk with them about what we can do to fill that, but we still need to come and clean that up and get topsoil on and get it seeded.
Can I, can I ask, have you ever seen in the, by the Swisher track, um, the dead ends? Don't, I think, at least the one on Sunset has that same issue, it seems, where the dirt, I mean, a little bit different, but the dirt seems to have eroded underneath the edge of this, end of the street. I think on Prospect too, at the top. You know, the dead ends, you, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I, I do not go there very often.
If you ever get in that area, if you wouldn't mind looking, I just get concerned that there's enough erosion underneath those dead ends that something could crack.
Near the Swisher track, okay.
The dead ends by that.
And Sunset, Sunset too.
Yeah, Sunset and Prospect.
Uh, there was another intake that was plugged in Highland Drive. We had that cleaned out by Action Sewer, it was full of material and was not draining, so that's been cleaned out. The next item is Mid-American Energy, this has kinda been recurring item the last couple of months. We've been working with them for your direction to start figuring out how these lines are gonna go underground. Going back to last month, we met with them, they sent a schematic, I met with them, went through a bunch of questions. They've now resent another one with, um, like, more reasonable equipment locations and things we asked. On that last one, they stopped the overhead removal, like, at, at Triangle Park. And, and our initial thought as part of that Melrose scape was to go all the way to George Street, uh, where the cul-de-sac is, they've updated that to include that. And so as I know, I'm, my, my next step, I'm gonna meet with Paul to go through that, just look at how that impacts the commercial properties as far as the equipment and the electrical service, and, um, then, so, so the, the drawings they send to me are kind of hard to look at and read, so I think maybe after that, I'd come up with a, a simple schematic, um, to give to you to review and use.
And Jim and Greg had questions also of how that might-
Yep, and that, and that layout's got that equipment over there.
Yeah.
Or how, how the pole in front of their property goes away and what equipment is needed.
Right, how it's gonna impact, yeah.
Yep. Olive Court, um, so we do have preliminary drawings prepared for you. I'm actually going through right now, um, and doing a double check and review, and also double checking the cost estimate, so I should be done with that by the end of this week, so I can provide it to you. The sidewalk inspections for this year are done, uh, we're putting together the property reports and those letters that people get, which notify them of the repairs and, um, the date, uh, for next year, if they're gonna do their own repairs or if they wanna join. So those will be going out in the next couple of weeks. And then the pavement markings, some of them have been done, but, uh, they said they've been slowed down by the wet weather, they need to dry pavement, so they're doing them in pieces as they go and as they can get them done. Not on the report, but things I thought about here while, during the first half of the meeting, uh, Mid-American does have a repair of a gas main. They have a leaking gas valve over by Tower Court Park. And actually, this valve is buried under the street, uh, by, on Marietta, so, um, they wanna fix that, and I'm meeting with them, they're trying to come up with ideas to not tear up the street, to basically try and aban- abandon that pipe under there instead of digging it up, which I'm all in favor for and kinda pressing them to do, so.
How, how close to George, or is it-
Right in the crosswalk, right along George, yeah.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
So, um, that, the, the good news is, they're working with a plan to, to not dig up the street. I, I think we'd be more involved with boring a new line and connecting on either end of the street, tying it in and then abandoning the piece in the middle. So, that's what I'm pressing hard for as well. Unless it's just physically impossible and they can't do it, but... The Melrose patch data, so, um, again, this is an item from last meeting, we did contact Pelling, they're gonna do a more permanent patch for the winter, um, but in the meantime, I had them come and swing by with a truck and, and fill it in, 'cause they said they'd get it done before the season ends this year, but it might be a couple of weeks, and so I asked them if they would swing by and do that for us, since we got some football games, and, and they did that, which was nice.
That helps, thank you for getting that.
Yeah.
So many people have told me, that's wonderful.
And, uh, and then the last time I, I got is the, the bus shelter on Sunset Street. I did get an update, uh, from Iowa City Transit.
Oh, good.
They said that they will have it installed in April next year.
It's only been two years.
They do not have the, the order, they have not received their order yet, and, uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be one of their first ones they put in when they get it in April.
Well, who, who dropped the ball on the order?
I don't know the answer.
I mean, 'cause we worked that out last, last year, you know, year and a half ago.
Yeah, I did not ask, I just wanted an update, and so that's what, that's what it is.
So they've stopped also doing statistical, uh, statistical data captures for ridership?
Have not received any more data, correct?
And thank you for fixing the street light above the Melrose Suns- Sunset intersection, the flashing-
Yeah, I think, and so Nate too, I think you called, uh, so Iowa City Traffic, a big, a big thank you to Iowa City Traffic, they came out, fixed the lights, they replaced the photocell in there for us, and basically we put in a new one and hope it, hope it works well, let us know if there's any problems, so.
Thank you for getting that done.
Very nice of them.
Yeah. Any questions for Josiah? Thank you so much, Josiah. Uh, could you stay while the, uh, while Jim gives his report for the hotel update? And so, I'm gonna ask Jim to go ahead and give the hotel project update.
Uh, where we are right now on the hotel is we're, well, we just submitted plans to Josiah for the stormwater retention basin, which, did they, did you get those today?
That's true, right?
From MMS?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, that's a, that's a fairly extensive system, it's three hundred feet long and about thirty, forty feet wide, and it's a, a system of, of rock and tile, where we're going to store all the water from our site, and then it'll slowly drain out down to the very south end of our property, and then it'll, uh, end up in, uh, kinda going under the railroad back into Brookside Park. Now, currently, we have two water retention basins temporarily, uh, one, one at the north end and one at the south end, and even with all these rains, it's been, we're, they've been working real well. We've had to, uh, clean them out a couple of times, but, uh, so far, everything, everything is, is working. We've got the retaining wall started, and at least two-thirds of the way up at the south, be the southeast corner, uh, we're roughly twelve feet high right now, and this is where the stairs come from, um, the, the Woodside Drive area, where the condominiums, the apartments are, this is down at the very eastern, eastern corner. We're gonna have a set of stairs that come up, and then that'll tie into the, to the sidewalk that goes along the railroad tracks and out to Melrose. And, uh, other than that, well, that's kinda where, where we are right now. We're still, uh, finalizing plans on the restaurant, and, uh, Peter, Peter Harmon from Graze Restaurant is working with us, and, uh, he's, he's designing a rooftop restaurant very similar to what his restaurant, uh, that he has down in Burlington, Iowa, Martinis. And we're, we're getting along just great with him, and we're still in, probably, we're still about ninety percent with our, our hotel plans right now, we're, we're dealing with the different, uh, exterior finishes and, and heating and cooling systems, but I think within two or three weeks, we're gonna have hundred percent plans that, and finalize, finalize all the bids, so.
Yes, can, can I ask you, um-
Sure.
The, the guy that owns Graze, um, who's, he's negotiating the contract with you for the restaurant?
You mean, what was the question?
What's his name? What was his name?
Oh, Peter Harmon?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's Graze.
Okay, now, he's not the chef, is he?
Yes, he is the chef.
He's the chef.
Yeah, he, well, he's, he is a chef, I mean, he's got more than one restaurant, he's got Martinis, and then he's got Graze Restaurant downtown, and, and when I say Graze, that's G-R-A-Z-E.
Yeah. I was just think, wondering, you know, whether, that it was going to be a upscale-
Oh, yeah, this is a-
Like Berengini's or Archer Green or-
Yes. And he feeds the football team and he feeds the basketball team, so he's kinda connected with the university already, and, and he does quite a bit of catering as well, so, um, great, great restaurant. I, I would definitely say it's an upscale restaurant. It's, it's one that you can come in casually, but, uh, still, you can, it's, it's really, really good food. I mean, it's, it's more, the healthy food, more towards the, um, vegan and, and, I mean, he's, but he's got everything, and I mean, he's definitely, uh, got a good following here, so, I think he's gonna be a, really a, a great asset for the hotel and, and for the, the city as well, so.
Any questions for Jim? Thank you so much, Jim, for coming and helping with the park plans. So, um, my mayor's report, I sent that, and, uh, I wanted to consider a change of date for November council meeting, and then also, uh, Virginia had said she wanted a special meeting or a work session for, uh, discuss plans for Swisher, and then, uh, Dottie wanted a special, no, a special meeting? It was your suggestion to have a special meeting?
Oh, on the-
Or, on the police-
On the ordinance.
On the ordinance resolution. So, uh, I suggested, like, November, so November thirteenth is the Tuesday, uh, could we do it November twelfth at seven? It's a Monday?
The, uh, regular meeting or?
Yeah, regular meeting.
Yep, it's okay with me.
Yeah, that works.
That works. I see nods, except for Sylvia.
I'm checking, so what day for a special?
This would be the regular city council meeting, instead of November thirteenth, it'd be November twelfth.
Oh, I see, yeah, that's true.
At seven PM? Okay. Okay, so that'll be the regular city council meeting, Monday, uh, November twelfth. And then, um, a work session or a special meeting for, uh, plans for the, did you wanna say a little bit about that? You just want, would like to begin discussion of what-
Yeah, I'm open to feedback from council on whether it's a special meeting or a work session, um, but I think it just be, might, might be nice to set a separate time for people to come in and give their feedback on the park.
And, um, we can do that, um, still in October, we can do, um, there's some suggestions, I was thinking Mike, it could be twenty-third or twenty-fourth.
I have a question. Um, when does the MPOG send, uh, send out the comprehensive plan survey that's pending?
Uh, Kent said, uh-
It was in my report.
Denise said-
Okay, but what date, when is it happening? Because my biggest concern is, right now, it's the toughest time to get parents, in particular, young families who have kids and who have evening sports, they've got taekwondo, they've got volleyball, basketball, and-
Well, Kent, Kent sent out-
My, my, my thing is, I'd like to, I'd like to use the community survey to also include a question on Swisher, so that we get a better population sample of what the thinking is from the community, because this is-
So you don't wanna have a special meeting?
I think it's premature. I think maybe after-
Um-
So that's why it's important that you would run-
I mean, during the school year, the school's on. During the summer, nobody wants to have a meeting because school's out and they're on vacation. I mean, that's always like that.
I know, but you know what, the summer is coming.
And then there's football season, then there's basketball season, then there's volleyball season, there's, I mean, it's life.
Yeah.
I understand your point.
It's an, it's a super important community discussion.
I mean, I'd rather do both, but-
And I think we need to, we need to use as many resources to advertise.
Let's do both. What, try to include a question in the-
Survey?
Survey and have a special meeting.
Okay, that, in my report, um, he's going to send out, uh, his, uh, online survey sometime very soon, this week or next week, and then he's gonna start setting up public meetings after that. And so it's coming out very soon.
Okay, so should include the question.
And he wants council, I mean, you know, he's, wants council input on the online survey, and so that could be a council input to include that. And that's agreeable to everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Instead of a special meeting or a work session?
Oh, no, I said both.
Oh, you said both, I'm sorry. So, let's, and you said both, and-
Well, hell, I mean, we're talking about an awful lot of extra meetings here, so we might wanna sort, but, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Well, we have, uh, October twenty-ninth, thirtieth, then we go into November.
Yeah, I'm not in-
I'd skip Halloween, I gotta pass out my candy bars.
I'm kidding.
And then we have November, could be November first.
I, I'm not available, birthday.
October twenty-third or twenty-fourth?
Uh, I'm kinda saving October twenty, it could be October twenty-third, um, but not the twenty, I'm, I leave town the twenty-fourth.
All right, so twenty-ninth and thirtieth don't work? Or did we recover those?
Could be the, could be the twenty-
Is it twenty-third?
Second and twenty-third.
It's close to-
We can always have- Are we talking about October?
We're talking about October.
October, still.
You mean that Kent is sending us stuff?
Okay, Nick says the twenty-third, does that work for?
I can't, because International Might is being hosted at Northwest Junior High for the very first time, so I'm, yeah.
Okay.
So there, are you free any of the days that have been mentioned?
Um, how about the twenty-ninth or the thirtieth?
Well, I'm looking at that. Twenty-sixth, do we throw out the twenty-seventh? Not in October for the, so let me tell you, after-
Or maybe-
Tuesday, the twenty-third, Northwest Junior High, and then I'm out the rest of the week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, all the, yeah.
How about the twenty-second? Monday, the twenty-second?
We can.
Okay. So, we're saying maybe the twenty-eighth or the twenty-ninth?
And we're in October?
No.
Those are Saturdays and Sundays.
Oh, twenty-eighth's a Sunday, I come back on that day. Twenty-ninth or thirtieth?
Yeah, fine as new.
I don't, I don't think I'm, yeah, I'm not gonna be available.
I don't know, I, I don't have my calendar here.
I asked you to bring your calendars in my report.
Well, I checked it. Well, you, you checked, you asked.
Okay, the thirtieth?
You asked for the calendar for the, the meeting, and that's what it?
I said to bring your calendars and to bring your calendars for this.
I'm available the fourth onward.
The fourth of November?
Mm-hmm.
I can't do it then.
And that's a Sunday.
Well, the fourth is a Sunday, the sixth is the election day, and so, we'll, everybody will be voting up here. So, you could do the fifth, the seventh, the eighth, if you want to move. So, we could check on the thirtieth, maybe? That's, I just want to go back to that a minute. You're saying no?
November thirtieth or October?
October thirtieth.
I'm not here. I'm not available.
Okay.
Just physically unavailable.
So, then we move to November, and the only days you're available are the fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh. We can, we can do it in that week.
Let me make sure that I'm really bad. Okay, yeah, I am.
I mean, the sixth is out. It's election day.
Not until Thursday, please. The eighth. I can do the eighth.
I can do the eighth.
November eighth?
I can't. I have, I have book club.
Forget it, then. We'll talk about it again next month.
Well, we also have to have a meeting for the police. Or we could put them together. I mean, that was a suggestion. I said we'd talk about it here, if we need it.
The regular meeting on the?
The regular meeting is mu, is gonna be Monday, the twelfth now. So, if we could get some things done before?
I don't think we need a police special meeting. Like I said, I just think you three need to come to consensus, but.
Yeah, I agree with that, too.
Okay. And you agree?
Be back November twelfth.
Okay. And, and no work session for the park yet?
I mean, unless we can do with four people.
For the park yet. We don't have a date for the park work session.
No, you want?
And then somebody said next month.
Why not?
To come for that. Virginia, did you say next month?
Since, I mean, unless we can?
We could do November, December. Okay, so we're just gonna defer it until, uh, the twelfth. Okay, very good.
Nobody can do November eighth? What happened to that?
I, I can't. I have book club. I have book club, I'm?
I understand. I mean, I miss things when I have, you think Mike's schedule's just this free?
Yeah, you plan around the scheduled meetings, and that's what I have done.
Okay. Do you want to attend? We'll have a quorum with four people.
What are we talking about?
We're gonna have a meeting with the park Swisher trap.
I want to be part of that conversation. I have serious reservations.
I do, too, because I'm?
I know. Are you, aren't you available, then? You said from the four, November eighth?
Yeah, November eighth onward.
I'm not, and I'd like to be part of it.
Dottie's the one who can't because of the book club, right?
Okay, we could have it.
Virginia suggested the fifth. What's going on with the fifth?
We could do it on the ninth.
The fifth of November?
No.
Yeah, it's the day before the election.
You're out of town?
Dental surgery.
Can I just make a suggestion? Why don't we plan it right after the elections, so that we can live a big sign that says Swisher Park Planning Meeting X Date? That way, we make sure that we have a strong?
Okay, so start recommending a date.
Okay, so.
That would be the sixth, I mean, the election day.
The thirteenth.
And the eighth doesn't work.
And we're, the thirteenth doesn't work, that's why we're moving it to the?
No, that week doesn't work.
What's wrong with the seventh?
Thanksgiving, yeah.
Not that we could think of.
How about the seventh of November?
What about the seventh of November?
We're at the seventh.
No, good lord. How about a Saturday morning?
How about Friday night?
Saturday morning looks?
Can we start at seven-thirty on the seventh?
Sure, sure. Sure, we could start at seven-thirty on the seventh. Is that, is that working for you, everybody?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think so, but I, I'll work and see.
Thank you, Dottie. So, we're gonna say November seventh at seven-thirty for a work session, special meeting.
I think probably work session is fine. I mean, I don't know that?
Yeah, I mean, special meeting is, the basic thing is, you can make a decision. Work session, council can't make a decision.
I don't think we'll have any decisions. I think it's just?
And, and what, we'll say it's about an hour and a half. You know, we'll kind of put a limit on it. And, and I like Sylvia's idea about putting up a sign, saying, or, you know, even a little handout or something. I don't know.
I like a big sign. They're cheap, they're five dollars. Get them at Staples.
Um, are you gonna do the sign?
I can help you, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we got our dates. Thank you very much. Now, we'll go to legal report. Thank you. So, first of all?
Okay, so I sent out a written report. The, as far as the agenda's concerned, there's a resolution eighteen forty-six, which directs the ULP Hotel Owners, Jim and Greg, their LLC, to convey the Olive Court homes that they purchased pursuant to the conditional zoning agreement, to convey those to the city, once I've approved conveyance documents and those kinds of things. So, that was the first item, eighteen forty-six.
I just want to know if it's premature to do this before we have finished the RFP process?
It's hard, well, we have to have them in place. We, well, it, so it just authorizes the, the, it authorizes the city to give the go-ahead. It's not gonna happen immediately.
It doesn't say it's like happening today?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, then I motion adoption eighteen forty-six.
Second.
Okay, motion by Virginia, second by Nick. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Ooh, is that you?
It is, I guess so.
I'm not used to that.
I was gonna say, Bill's Kemper, I guess that won't work. Miller?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Maher?
Hi.
Herbold?
Hi.
Kizada? All right.
Okay, motion carries.
All right, the next one is eighteen forty-seven, which would, which, this is, this concerns everything with regard to the OUP TIF and claiming the five percent that's not rebated. I covered it in my report. What this, what this does is it, it sets a hearing for, I'll fill in the date. It'll be, you know, seven o'clock on the twelfth of November, to consider expanding the footprint of the TIF from just this property where we're sitting right now, the OUP property, to include Melrose Avenue and, and Olive Court, with the thought that there are projects that the council has in mind or has undertaken, to some extent, that could be funded with those TIF funds if the council desires to do that. This doesn't fund them. It doesn't commit the council for the future, even the future as far as November twenty-eighteen, next month. But it, it puts a process in place to have a hearing to do that.
And, and, okay, are we opening up discussion?
A motion adoption eighteen forty-seven?
What do you want to, motion first? Motion by Virginia and second by Nick, and discussion.
I have some serious concerns about why we're using an expansion of the TIF district. One thing is to go back and, and honor the consensus of the majority council earlier to change the designation for the five percent that wasn't getting captured correctly in the city budget, and change it to affordable housing. Fine, if that was the direction of the three to two vote, go for it. But, it's a different question to say we're expanding the TIF footprint. Number one, we're getting bonding, what is it, fund a grant for seven hundred thousand dollars for the Melrose street repairs. So, I'm curious to know why we would need to open up Melrose to become a TIF district if we already have fun, a funding line coming that's solely dedicated for that?
I don't, I don't believe there's enough money. We still have?
No, this is just a way to claim that twenty-five thousand dollars. It doesn't change any, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, it doesn't change any of the funding for future projects. It doesn't change the way any property taxes from Melrose or Olive Court are handled or generated, or?
Yeah, that's true. So, the, the two things I would say, the footprint, if, if you, if you, if the council wants to open up the, access those funds for any use other than at OUP.
I know.
Because right now, it can only be used on this?
And the other point I was gonna make was that the, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't change anything with regard to the questions, Virginia.
So, so let me finish my, my thoughts. So, I find it very odd that we're expanding the TIF district. And it'd be great to have a map. I'd like to not vote on this until I have a serious appreciation of the geographical footprint we're talking about. So, I'm asking, I'm, I'm asking for disclosure, additional disclosure on the visual of this map. The second thing I wanted to point out is that there was, Virginia at least, very early on, when you joined in April and or in May, a statement that you said you wanted to see the hotel money, the revenue coming for infrastructure. So, why are we opening up TIF for additional infrastructure, when the increment for that district is based on appreciation of property values? I doubt very much.
I don't think you're understanding this correctly. We're trying to find, we're trying to claim that twenty-five thousand dollars, and so it has to be used within the TIF district. And so, there's nowhere to spend twenty-five thousand dollars. I mean, I guess we could buy a retail space. That's the only option here.
No, because here's, my, my understanding of where we were going with any of this hotel revenue was to invest it in infrastructure.
Yeah, all of that is still correct.
So, so I don't, I don't see why we need to. And I thought you wanted to do affordable housing, and that was the directive.
Yeah, but we have to, you have to expand the TIF district to, the money has to be spent in the TIF district. So, if we want to spend it on affordable housing, we can either make the entire town the TIF district, which I think people would probably find a sensitive thing to do. And so, the workaround is to expand it just to include a specific project. So, you get the twenty-five thousand to spend on that project, and then you take twenty-five thousand out to spend on affordable housing. So, it's just, it's a trying to expand the TIF district in the most narrow way possible that still allows us to access those funds. And like I said, it doesn't change anything about the way the property taxes in that expanded area is handled.
Why don't, why don't we just use, redesignate the affordable housing line? That's the reason why we're expanding all of this. Leave it out of affordable housing, and, and, and just keep it where it is, which allows us to have an open end use of those dollars. Right now, we?
Because you just can't do that. I mean, I think Steve can probably, it just, it just doesn't work that way.
He spoke to John Dano.
I mean, it would be so much more simple if we could just do that, but you just can't.
And that leads me to my final remark tonight. I asked Steve, I said, you know, Steve, I really need to see notes of your conversation. I want to see notes, Steve. So, I'm asking you publicly to see the notes of those financial meetings that you had with the TIF attorney in Des Moines, because I'm trying to do my own analysis of where we might go with this, because I don't want to see TIF creep in University Heights.
No, I just want to use that twenty-five thousand dollars. That's the, that's the only purpose here.
Steve, could you address what John Dano said for the council?
Yeah, we can't just park that money the way that was suggested. And I agree with what Virginia and Sylvia said, is like, couldn't we just do this? And we can't. So, there has to be a district, there has to be a project. The city has to borrow money from itself to pay for the project.
But that's, but that's, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's only if we want to capture all of the dollars that was, that, that you all wanted to capture back in May.
Oh, right.
But if we leave it with all that capturing, we can still use that revenue line for whatever. There's no restriction on that revenue. It's completely clear and free, as I understand it, for use. It's unencumbered dollars.
So, I'm not sure I understand your question, but you?
That's why I need to see?
Well, I'm saying, so, like, the revenue line, I mean, yeah, I think you're right. You can leave that to say whatever you want, where the revenue comes from.
But you gotta actually get the money. You don't just, you can put a revenue line, yeah, we can use the money now. You can put a revenue line on the budget that doesn't make the money show up. To make the money show up, you gotta do this.
No, you don't. If you want more money, if you want to continue to stiff the school district and all these other agencies, yes, you're absolutely right. We need to do exactly what they're proposing. I'm suggesting you still have an out to make use of whatever money remains post the distribution that we got under the?
I guess, I feel like we vetted this idea pretty thoroughly in the special election between me and Doug. I said, I thought we should get that money.
I told you it was a big issue. I said, you all thought you're receiving all of this amount of money? You, you aren't, because it's not used or designated in this particular way. And I was very clear when we voted for the redesignation, that to redesignate it meant that we are siphoning away, diverting money from our school districts, from our public agencies, and I don't agree with that. We're a super wealthy little town. We're gonna?
And so, would you rather not have twenty-five thousand dollars for affordable housing? That's your position?
My position is, we're gonna have a boatload of money in the next two years if we keep the hotel on schedule, and that we come up with a really good plan that makes sense.
Well, I'm concerned about the infrastructure, the streets and sidewalks.
That's not a part of this discussion.
See, that's what I'm telling you.
And the way it reads now, it can go anywhere, correct?
Uh, all right, well, anyway, can we vote?
Steve, do you have a comment?
There's two things, I guess, I want to clarify. The, the notion of the, and I haven't been at the nerve center of this part, but the Melrose Avenue streetscape, there's been funding approved by the MBOJC for a portion of that funding, but it's contingent on the city paying the, the balance, which I think is roughly seven hundred thousand dollars, give or take. So, it's not like funding is there in terms of a hundred percent. The second thing?
We're gonna have to bond for it. If we didn't use TIF, the TIF district, we'd be bonding for it, and we'd be paying for it.
Well, right. I just wanted to clarify that it's not like the money's there, so it's paid for. You're, I think you're right.
It's anticipated to be there.
Yeah. The other thing, the visual, the, it's, it's, it is literally Melrose Avenue through town and Olive Court. That's, that's, that's the map. I mean, if you want a map created, I think we can prob, I mean, I don't know what we'll do, probably highlight those ar, those areas, but that's, that's all it is. That's what the proposal is.
And Steve, is there any way through, following through on this resolution next month, that some property tax monies could end up going to a TIF?
No.
I mean, that's?
No, I mean?
This is not, not the discussion at hand, correct?
Yeah.
No, but it could eventually lead to it, which is what I'm calling creep. And I've shared that with other councillors at this table.
Well, I'm not, so I'm not sure everybody's on the same page in the discussion.
No.
The only, the only source of the funds we're talking about, that being TIF, the only source of those funds are the people that pay taxes in OUP. If you change the TIF district, that is, that opens up opportunities for the council to spend those funds.
It does not open up opportunities for the council to source those funds.
That's right, right. So, it doesn't change the source of the funds. It's all, only always here.
Only in the spending.
All you need to do is attach a new resolution declaring abutting properties. All it will take is an abutting property to, to, to the TIF district and?
Is that true, Steve?
I would think so.
Well, it depends what you're saying. If you, if you attach abutting properties, that doesn't mean you're gonna then tax those properties in differently.
No, you could tip them away, and that's my biggest concern.
I don't know what you mean by tip them away.
You know what? Show me, show me your notes.
It won't change, so like, as they say, so if you, if you?
Sylvia, you're saying words.
If you?
And they?
If you?
Don't amount to a concept that is coherent.
If you added the homes?
I'm not directing my concepts to you.
If you added the homes on Grand Avenue as part of the TIF district, the people that live on Grand Avenue and pay taxes, their, their taxes won't change one bit.
I know that, they won't. But if you have a developer who wants to come in and purchase, they can certainly say, can you expand the TIF district into my property so that I can build you brand-new properties of a certain?
I think you'd have to start over with a whole new set there. This is, this is based on the TIF that's been adopted, not a new TIF. So, the other thing I did want to say, no, well, I'm sorry. That's all I wanted to say.
And I just want to make sure that you send me your email notes, just so I can get a handle of that conversation, because I know you take very good notes.
Does everyone want me to send my notes to everyone? Do you want those?
I do, I want them, for everyone, if nobody else wants them.
Well, I'm, I'm asking for direction from the council on whether I'm sending them to anyone. If I send them to anybody, I'm probably gonna send them to everybody. So, do you want me to send those or not? It's up to you. You're my?
Sure.
All right.
What's the consensus from everyone?
I'm only one person.
I guess, Steve, what if, I don't understand why you'd be sending out your notes. I, I don't, I mean, I want you to be able to feel comfortable taking notes that you need for your own purposes, not thinking that everything's gonna be discovered by council anytime we want to see what your private notes are. I guess I don't fully, maybe I'm not fully tracking this conversation, but that's my, my thought.
I'm tracking it as, and I need to read. I need to see what, what references and sections were noted.
I'm confused, because I wasn't part of the TIF thing. I'm just confused.
Yeah. I'm not confused, but I'm concerned. So, I want to know what the parameters of the conversation were, and I think that's?
Let's move on to the vote.
Maybe it's just a summary.
To your satisfaction, not to mine.
What notes are, do you have in mind?
No, ones he had from the meeting. I think those would be appropriate.
Well, you say the meeting. I've been talking to?
I don't know, Steve.
Please don't interrupt me. I've been talking to John Danos and Amy Borg about this for four years, you know?
Not that far, just the one for the expansion of the TIF district.
Is that, is that what the council wants me to do?
I'm concerned that if we start asking you to send your personal notes out, that you are gonna, you know, it's gonna impact how you do your job. I want you to be able to do your job, you know, and feel secure that you can do it. If she's asking for your personal notes, that is not something that I support.
Okay.
Okay, let's just have a vote on it.
Wait a minute, hold on. I want to clarify what I'm asking for. I'm asking for a written, a written work product of the advice, of the communications that were made, section citations. I just want to get that from my end. I'm very concerned that we're all now having the consensus that none of us can ask for information from the city attorney. Come on, I mean, the city attorney has been super busy, you know, rushing to get these houses sold, and hasn't shared any of that information. I certainly haven't asked for it, because at the end of the day, I'm in alignment. Those houses need to sell. This TIF issue is big enough for me that I want to see what, what was in writing, what notes were taken place. I shared those notes with all of you when I was doing the Swisher trap. I didn't withhold information. I gave you all an up-to-date. I don't know why you're all reversing your position and making this a big issue of denying me access to information. I happen to be part of the client base, so I don't see a problem with it. I think I would see a problem if I'd further distributed that information elsewhere, which I haven't. I review what I need to review, and I move on.
I, I agree that you're part of the client base.
That's right.
And, and, but I, but the client is the council. The client's the city. The city speaks to the council.
This council wants to be. This council wants to be.
Was there a motion?
Well, my position is I, I don't want to have him disclose his private notes.
But confidential over them, privileged and confidential.
Well, let's move on to vote then. We don't have, you don't have three.
A summary of what the discussion was about would, I think, be okay, but.
It doesn't outline, and they're pretty good, they're pretty fair, because that allows me an insight into.
Well, then why don't you make a motion and we'll vote.
I'm making a motion for, for information regarding the, limited to the scope of this discussion, this resolution.
From our city attorney? Okay, is there a second?
No, 1847.
Are, are we referring to specifically to notes or just something general?
No, just notes, he types them up. He's on the phone typing up.
Is there a second?
I could, I, I guess I'm confused because.
As a matter of principle, do you, do you want the attorney to deny you access to information?
Well, I don't want, I don't want to be prying into any private conversations that he has with parties. I think a summary of what the discussion was about would be fine, because it's pretty general. But I wouldn't want someone demanding my notes, even if I were.
Well, you're not the city attorney, Dottie.
Well.
Can I make a motion that we move to vote on 1847?
I think he would have to be advised.
Okay, Virginia, Virginia still, there's.
No second on Sylvia's motion?
No second on Sylvia's. And then, Virginia, could you just clarify that again?
Can I move that we vote on 1847?
Okay, and then there's a second by Nick. So you basically are calling the question, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, say no?
No.
No.
Okay.
That one's not a roll call.
We need a super majority to pass that.
So we're continuing to have debate.
That's right.
Oh, okay. That's true.
Unless we have consensus to vote just on the underlying motion, which has been seconded.
That's right. So, discussion.
I vote that we motion to adopt ordinance 1847.
That has already been.
It's already on the table.
Oh, is it?
And then.
You ready to vote?
And then I asked if we wanted to vote.
Yeah, I'm ready.
And then you voted against voting.
And I'm gonna continue doing that, Madam Mayor, so you.
So now you want to go ahead and vote?
Let's get it over with, who's gonna vote?
Okay, very good.
That was the point.
So we're gonna, consideration of resolution number 1847. Uh, roll call vote.
Moore.
Aye.
Uh, Maher.
Well, I can't find it, but that's okay. Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Kaisana.
No.
And Miller.
Aye.
Okay. Is it, uh, so there's a notice that gets published.
And wait, let me, let me ask a question. Are we still talking about the, the?
Affordable, affordable housing TIF expansion.
Okay, I can't approve the, the, no, I vote no.
This is to set a public hearing and the decision won't be made until after the public hearing? Isn't that right, Steve? This is just to set the public hearing for that? It's not a vote for what you're gonna do? It's just to set the public hearing on designation of the expanded University Heights One University Place Urban renewal area and amendment. So are you still voting no?
Yeah, I'm.
Okay. Okay, so it's 3-2.
Right. So, so ask if there's any objection to letting Dottie.
Oh, is there any objection to let, letting Dottie change her vote?
No.
No objection? Okay, none from you, okay, very good.
Hang on a second, sorry, I gotta do, catch up here.
Because Steve's gotta catch up, because he's also doing the minutes.
Multitasking, Steve.
Yeah, uh, okay, so, so there's a public hearing that will get set for the, you know, the start of the council meeting. There's also a, um, there's a notice that has to be sent to the school district and the county saying that we're gonna change our TIF district and they can come and talk about it.
I have a question, Steve.
They've never done that, but.
Steve, don't we have a, a 3-2 for no on resolution 1847? So why are we proceeding? Dottie changed her vote.
I changed my vote.
That's a 3-2, yes. It's a 3-2, yes. But it's not a super majority that you need vote, but. And someone could change their vote next month. Isn't that correct, Steve? It's a majority vote.
Right, it takes a.
To set the hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right. So I'll, um, is it okay if we do that meeting with the school district, you know, at a, at the start of the next meeting as well?
12, correct.
12? Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, I don't think I have anything else, it's not in my report.
Okay, and Chris sent around a city clerk report. And then Lori, we have the treasurer's report she sent around, and we have a payment of the bills. Are there any objection to paying the bills?
None.
Hearing none, the bills will be paid by unanimous consent. And then we'll go down to.
Treasury report? No, treasury report. Um, we have two CDs that are coming up. They're due in the next, November, one is in December. So we'll just follow the same process we did last time.
So you'll put it on the agenda for November?
I thought we had a November meeting.
We do.
Yeah, so I thought that would work.
November 12th. So you're gonna put it on the agenda for then?
Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, uh, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a note.
Yeah, but then there's like a grace period of what, 17 days? Yeah, so we should be covered.
Okay.
Do the sevens, right, when are we meeting? So we'll put it on the Swisher Park working session. It'll need to be a special session, though, in order to take action on that financial.
Special meeting. Okay.
And what's the action that we're taking, that you're taking?
A CD.
A CD, and I think we'll know more whether we even need to take action based on funding estimates for, for next, for the PD's system and sign and anything, because those are your reserves.
So we'll make that an agenda item for that.
Once again, how much are our reserves right now?
Reserves is your word for savings, just to make sure we're on the same, on the same side. And Lori checked for me, and we have 275 in reserve and checking is 410. So we have quite a bit of, of dollars in there.
And how much is an appropriate amount of reserves to have on hand for a city of our size budget?
25% of our.
Of our annual budget?
Our budget, yeah.
Oh, that's not 25%, though, is it?
I'm not too sure, because we have the TIF in there, too. So that's a half a million that's loading us. My budget's about.
I thought it was close to 60. Yeah, I thought it was above one and a half.
Okay, so, Virginia, you want to go ahead with your, uh, report?
Alright, first up I have, I put in my report, second consideration, but we're actually back to first consideration once again.
For what?
On ordinance 233 prohibiting short-term rentals.
The only change is we, there's some findings that were circulated with this version. Didn't change the substance of the ordinance. The only substantive clarification was where the ordinance said that, uh, that a rental permit or a rental term had to be at least 30 days. We added the word consecutive. So it has to be at least 30 consecutive days, which was the whole point of prohibiting, you know, two days here and four days there. We were concerned that, well, what if somebody says, I've got 20, 20 here and 10 there and separated by two months, but that, that means I'm not a short-term rental. So that's the only substantive change was.
Can we collapse one and two, since we all knew that that was the intent?
I mean, I'm not super inclined to collapse these, but if the rest of you feel comfortable going ahead with that, that's fine. I'm willing to take my time with this. But, I mean, essentially, we've, I'm, the differences over the past three months have been extremely minor. I don't know, are you making a motion?
Sure, just to keep it on track.
Okay, is there a second? Dottie, is there a second to collapse two readings?
For what?
I'll second it, just so you guys can vote on it.
Ordinance 233.
Yeah.
I just don't want to be accused of rushing anything.
Okay, there's a second. Any further discussion by council before they vote?
So we collapsing two or all three, or?
No, they're collapsing.
One and two.
Yeah, collapsing all three, so it would be a final, final consideration.
She said two. She said two.
You said.
My understanding is two, is.
One and two.
So then it would be passed in final version tonight?
No.
Did that get a second?
It did, Dottie seconded it.
But it wouldn't, it's to collapse one and two, so the third one would be in November.
Right, so it keeps you on track.
Got it. Alright.
Okay, so council's ready to vote?
On the motion to collapse.
On the motion to collapse.
Uh, Maher.
Aye.
Uh, Herbold.
Aye.
Kaisana.
Aye.
Uh, Miller.
Aye.
And Moore.
Aye.
Okay, so now we have a second consideration of ordinance number 33.
So yeah, minor differences, 30 consecutive days and the defining that if you have a guest, the owner is present on the dwelling during that time. You can't have a guest who's there while you're vacated.
So do you move?
Move adoption, 233.
So is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Virginia, is there?
Second.
And a second by Lisa. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Herbold.
Aye.
Kaisana.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
And Maher.
Aye.
I do just want to say on that, that I've been calling for feedback on this ordinance for a few months now, and I am finally starting to hear from some owner-occupied properties who would like to have some sort of flexibility in their use of their property and some sort of limited operation of Airbnbs in the future. So once we're done with readings of 233, I do want to have some discussions on whether we want to allow them in unlimited fashion for owner-occupied properties.
Okay.
Um, moving on to 234, I move adoption of ordinance 234, Parkland dedication.
Second.
Okay, motion by Virginia, second by Nick, discussion. This is third consideration of ordinance number 234. Roll call vote.
Kaisana.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Maher.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Motion is adopted.
Okay, then, do you have some more?
Yeah, I've got a resolution. So move adoption, resolution 1848. This is the committee to review RFPs for the Olive Court houses. We got a community member, Erica Schultz. So I want to propose that lines A, B, and C read Lisa Moore, Virginia Miller, and Erica Schultz.
Second.
Okay, motion by Virginia, second by Nick, Herbold. Discussion.
Who is Erica Schultz and what's her background?
She lives on Olive Court.
Okay, and her background?
She lives in an old house on Olive Court.
Does she know real estate and things like that, or are you guys gonna be?
I think she has a vested interest in.
I think she's lived here 15 years. Something, I think she said something like that. She works for the school district and is raising, her and her husband are raising two sons. Uh, she worked on the, uh, the logo for University Heights back in 2010.
Yeah, I know which house, yeah.
Yeah, now you remember, yeah. Okay, um, any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Miller.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Maher.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Kaisana.
Aye.
Adopted.
Okay, and we set the date for the special meeting, and it is a special meeting on November 7th at 7:30 PM. Okay.
So I'm sorry, is this special, is it a work session?
Well, we called it a special meeting, because we're gonna discuss the CD.
Oh, that needs to be.
That needs to be approved.
Wait, and why, I'm sorry, why can't we do that tonight?
Why? Because we haven't competitively bid out on those rates. Their rates are done, some by the banks on the beginning of the month, others.
That's enough, thanks.
Good.
Okay, anything else, Virginia?
No.
Okay, and then we have, uh, community protection. Maybe we've kind of gone over that.
Um, yeah, I think the big things that we want to talk, well, I, we want to talk about is the Citizens Police Academy. We're gonna, and again, why don't you speak first on it and see if there's anything I have to add?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna open up the application process for that sometime this, uh, fall. The ideas that Nick and I discussed were either, if council had any opinion about whether we somewhat rush it and hopefully get applications in the next four to six weeks, or if we do that this entire, and then work around the holidays going into December with Thanksgiving and Christmas and the New Year, or if we just take applications up until the New Year and start perhaps the second week of January after the holidays are passed and people are maybe more available. It might, I don't want to get into it and have everybody sign up, but then have holiday, you know, family commitments and nobody, you know, only handful of people will be able to show up, because that's counterproductive to the goal, so.
I did have a question on your committee report, but this is really for Nate. When are we going to have the PD manual ready to go? The carrier, I, um, our, our carrier for insurance coverage is asking us, and.
That's in your report.
It's in the report.
It is. Yeah. So we have, I mean, per council direction, um, the idea is to shorten the manual from what it currently is. So the, the current manual is still in place. We are working towards the, I guess, almost 50% reduction at the advice of the review of that, that was done during.
So you were just waiting for the consultant to come in.
Right, their legal team is going over it. They'll, I'll, it'll be, it'll be a, a cost that we can either afford as part of the budget or not. Or their review is part of our contract with them. Their legal team going in and their lawyers rewriting the policy to make it shorter while still incorporating all the necessary policies. That additional legal time is not included in the policy, in the yearly maintenance fee of them making sure that we're up to date on case law and things like that. That's the yearly maintenance fee. A rewrite of the policy in any way is an additional fee. the policy in any way is an additional fee. So they will be back to me on that by the end of this month, and then they will start that process once we get approval from council to spend that.
But we do have at least the minimum protection of a policy.
Correct. Yeah, the policy that was in place is... Yeah, that policy is still in place.
Do you think we can get acknowledgements from staff that they have received?
Yeah, they have all... They sign off electronically through the third-party vendor.
So we'll take this offline, but I'm going to follow up with you on getting that information to the carrier because that is...
They were given that information when Chris and I met with her. Her concern was city staff signing off, not the police department.
Okay.
So we can take that offline, but yeah, her concern was not with the police department.
Then also Nate and I are going to be setting up some sort of events to get, you know, more outreach to the communities. So the hope is that we would be having gatherings similar to the Coffee with a Cop from the past, and we're kind of tossing around ideas. If anybody has a really strong sense of what a good activity might be, you know, aside from going to Stella or Maggie's or something like that, then I'd be curious to hear the ideas.
I suggest Stella and Maggie's.
Pizza with police.
There you go.
Yeah, I think it's just a good idea to have an opportunity to share your concerns and questions, and, you know, that is it. And whether you want to do Stella or Maggie, but I think that's the idea of being community-available and friendly.
Yeah, the only other two real quick things. I had Sergeant Tucker and Officer Johnson attended the career day at Horn Elementary a week and a half ago. I just got an email this afternoon, late this afternoon, from the guidance council there telling me that the kids loved it, that they were still talking about it. Both the officers told me that the kids had a lot of great questions, so thanks to Horn for having us, and it's a yearly... It's become a yearly thing now, so we're happy to do that with them. The... What's that?
Who attended?
Daryl and Sergeant Tucker and Officer Johnson. The final thing then is, so we signed on as part of football season with a vehicle outfitting company called Kel-Tec out of the Des Moines area to do a pilot program for them and AT&amp;T on their, what is called their new FirstNet system. It's a first responder-only cellphone slash data-driven system. We were the first agency in the state of Iowa to go live with that in any capacity. They had tested it during some of the earlier tornadoes this summer, but to actually go online with it, we did it for football. They got the data. We got the use of all the equipment and the installation for free, so we saved several thousand dollars on that. Going forward, it's cheaper than our current provider, and in times of severe weather or when the system is stressed, such as a football game day, when a lot of cellphones do not work, we are the only ones, police, fire, EMS, emergency management personnel are the only ones using that tower system. So we had, when other agencies were not able to use their computers or cellphones down by the stadium, we had a hundred percent connection with zero downtime during any football games. So what they built the system to do is exactly what it did, and we were able to prove that. And now I have phone calls from other agencies that didn't want to entertain that before, but based on the data that we had, it's going to end up being a good thing for the entire county that we were able to prove the system, not something that nobody else wanted to take a chance on from what the vendors told me.
Wow, that's great, Nate.
Well, during the last home game, you know, the big, big one, that I lost my Verizon power about noon and did not have anything back till about six.
Yeah, and even with... So even with us for the... Like, I have a Verizon phone personally, but to be able to connect to the car, if you could, you know, Louise would call me from a landline to get out, I could still receive those calls, or from dispatch, we're still able to receive those calls, so that's...
Yeah, that's great.
So that's all I have.
Anything else, Nick?
Anything else?
Okay, we'll go on to finance.
All right, I wanted to discuss hiring Parkland Greenspace consultants to help with the community vision program or the process for the eleven acres of undeveloped land. I think it's fair to say that so far we've had two landscape architects, professional firms, or individuals contact us, but I think it would be wise to take advantage of the ample resources that Johnson County has with Greenspace designers who live here, and consistently a number of conservation people. I was just at the Trees Forever, what is it, program over the weekend. Thank you, Virginia, for mentioning that. And, you know, again, I met with other people who know of someone who does this, and I'm thinking, why are we limiting ourselves to just a few individuals that somebody knows? I think we just need to cast our net very broad and see what type of ideas come from these professionals once we know the feedback from our residential population, what we know. But I just want a serious commitment from this council that we aren't going to settle for who has access to any one member of council or the mayor. I think this is an important project that deserves as much attention and openness in how we procure people to come and help us design this park with whatever parameters we as a community...
Do we have money available to hire someone? Because when we talked to Sarah Hawkes about, you know, looking at designing some projects, she wanted to know exactly what we wanted, what the plan was, and then what the fee would be. So it's pricey as heck, you know, so...
It is, but you're purportedly dealing with people who know about parklands and green space.
Yeah, but I mean, you're going to have to get bids.
And so far, this council only approved fifty thousand, so I need to make sure that our monthly reports on the budget have a reserve line for greenspace parkland, eleven acres, so that we all know that we've lined up or earmarked fifty thousand for that. So I just wanted to get a commitment from this council that we're going to go in an RFP route to avoid any, you know, any appearances that we are influencing the outcome by selecting certain types of...
I suggest that this be discussed at the special meeting for the Swisher Drive.
I have some other comments now.
I mean, but just in the matter of time and everything, lateness. I mean, I think you said what you wanted to say, and so we'll discuss it more. Is that okay?
Yep, so there is a sample that was attached in the council packet, so you'll have an idea of what that could look like. Certainly, it's not final. It's something that is used by another agency in an unnamed county. The other one, we already talked about, ordinance 18235. I think the consensus is that Nick and I will continue to work on this, so we'll set up sometimes to make sure that we do connect as opposed to not connect. Consideration of Resolution 1850, establishing a minimum value for the sale price of the city's Olive Court properties. That's before you. It's a very simple, clean resolution that would assist Erica Schultz, Lisa Moore, and Virginia Miller in reviewing and working through the proposals that come through. I am very concerned that these are two valuable assets that were given to the city in a good-faith effort to get us to start revitalizing that street with quality improvements to homes that we want to see, at least I do, and the last historical council did, occupied by individuals and/or families who want to plant their roots here for a really long time. So...
Is that a motion?
No, hold on, I'm explaining it. So the resolution basically asks that we use the Johnson County assessed value that's posted as of last night when I was drafting this, so that they can use it as a minimum standard for accepting or considering pricing. So it's a very clean resolution. It doesn't ask anymore, and that's it. So is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second. That's a good idea.
Okay.
Okay, discussion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but I think I already did the discussion upfront.
We just can't.
Why not?
I mean, because the RFP is already out for one, so the time to bring this would not have been to write this last night. The time to talk about this would have been last month or before that. And if you want to revitalize the homes, you can't ask for their current assessed value and ask that they do the laundry list of work to the exterior to improve the neighborhood that we're asking for.
Essentially, you're saying you have to take it away, though.
So I think...
Otherwise, you're giving away the properties.
I mean, we don't have to accept any of the proposals that we get if we don't like the prices that come in, but...
Which means that you're hinting that it might be even lower than assessed values, which concerns me right now.
But you were working with Habitat on fifty thousand a house.
We're going to get... I mean, I don't know what we're going to get. I can't...
Fifty thousand won't touch.
No, that was the agreement.
No, it wasn't.
They were going to be investing two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Habitat was paying the city fifty thousand.
And we're paying the city, Sylvia. They were paying the city.
Right, but they were giving back exonerating quality.
You can't... I think there's a legitimate public interest in seeing the exterior work get done on these houses to bring up the minimum standard of the neighborhood, and that's just not... You can't have both. I don't...
Otherwise, we're just setting off...
It's just that simple.
I'm disappointed to see... And this I brought up. I brought up at the last council meeting. I said, this is rushed. We're settling in fall, in the middle of when people aren't really looking for a home. And also, the word bidder was problematic because it was really geared towards having exactly the people who have contacted Steve Ballard and his legal report. They're all contractors. They're going to flip. The only experience they bring in this transaction is how to make money for themselves. They're not going to be any assistance to us. They're in direct conflict with lining their pockets with money and leaving us with the minimum amount of services that they have to do for any of these. And that's why I am asking that we consider and have this ordinance adopted so that we at least have a strong offer price, because I suspect we're going to get really low offer prices and very low minimal improvements.
I mean, we'll find out, and if that's the case, we'll reject them and we'll start over.
Well, the criteria that have been listed to implement the changes are nothing but lipstick on a pig. I mean, that isn't... Those houses are in horrible disregard and disrepair, and in fact, the one should just be razed. And you're just throwing good money after bad because you can't... The foundations are even bad. I mean, you really have...
They've been a noncompliant.
Yeah, you're going to have to put money in it.
Is council ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay, roll call vote for consideration of Resolution 1850.
Remember where I started last time? 1850, okay, Moore?
Wait, wait, let me... What is... Is that the motion?
It's establishing a minimum value for the sale price of the city's Olive Court properties.
Okay, no.
Maher?
Oh, no.
Herbold?
I don't have it in front of me, so I don't know what in the heck I'm voting on.
Kizana?
Aye.
Aye, and I vote aye.
Miller?
No.
Okay, so it's three noes, and does council accept councilperson Maher changing her vote to yes?
Yes.
Okay, so...
It's three to, defeated.
It's a three to no. So we have... Anything else for you, Sylvia?
Oh, general, we have some CDs that are coming due. We have some issues with... I think we are going to be entering the TIF reporting report, which is due December 1, which means we have to adopt it sometime November. The history of that report is that it really never had an owner, so it got picked up by the legal department as a catch. Other cities, when I inquired as to who was doing what for their communities who are smaller, comparable to University Heights, says their treasurer or their financing would do it. So I asked that Steve Ballard help our treasurer, which would be Lori, learn how to do that work at a cost rate of, what, approximately twenty dollars an hour versus about two-hundred dollars an hour for a lawyer to complete it. I did tell Steve that I do want him involved for the first year in transition so that that report is kosher, and I want Lori to feel comfortable that she's got somebody backing her up as a second pair of eyes. The expectation is that going forward in years, three or whatever applicable years there may be, Treasury will be running that report. So I figured it was Treasury over to City Club since Lori has a greater, you know, not a greater, but a good command of our city finances, which are involved in the calculations of some of these fields. And that is due December 1. As the council, it's an annual appropriation, which means that you all have to decide whether that TIF will become probably a routine half-a-million going, close to a half-a-million going out. You are entitled to ask questions of the TIF party, and I know I'm going to be asking some questions, and I'd like to see Mr. Maxwell present to answer them. I don't want to not be able to answer questions in order... So that I can't, you know, I can't make up my mind if I don't have information. So I just want to let you know that at the December, at the meeting where we approve this report, you are entitled to ask questions so that you can make an informed vote.
I think it's November 12.
November 12 that we're doing that, okay.
Thank you.
Would you mind checking with Jeff if he's available?
I will check with him.
Thank you. If he can either be there or have a representative, that would be great. And we are going to start the budget rounds a bit sooner than what's expected. I'll probably be handing things out sometime via email in November when I meet with Steve and get him to agree on a schedule. But historically, this is for Nate and for Nick, the police department's budget runs their preliminary data and provides that to council ahead of time. We review it generally at a special meeting if we don't have enough time during a general regular meeting. But that's what I was asking about Nate a couple of weeks ago with respect to what it might be. And so your budget is the first budget discussed before all the other areas start reporting because it's such a comprehensive area. All right, so I think that's about it in terms of timelines.
Okay. Lisa, did you want to say anything today with the government?
I'm still here. That's it.
Okay, any announcements?
I did have a question for Lisa. Lisa, what's the update on the purchase of a new city webpage management?
We are getting a quote together.
That was last month.
Well, I didn't...
They've gone through some... That company's gone through some changes, I understand.
That's the problem, the companies.
I was going to say, do you want to do business with them?
Well, I think when they're making improvements, yes.
Well, it depends if they're not responding, right?
I didn't say they weren't responding.
Delaying.
They were not delaying. Please don't, please don't put words in my mouth, Sylvia. I will have a quote, get it together, and bring it to an upcoming meeting.
Paul, did you want to speak now? Thank you for being so patient, Paul.
Paul Moore, 1000, 1006 Melrose Avenue. At our last council meeting, we discussed the Vision Project in Melrose Avenue and Olive Court and Hotel. You deferred to this meeting to have more information so you could start to work on this. Other than Josiah tonight arranging a meeting with me tomorrow at 2 o'clock, I haven't seen anything fed into you people. When this Vision Project came about two or three years ago, I was not notified as a property owner. To this day, I don't know if you're going to assess the taxes for these improvements, or some of it, against the property owners. I don't know if you have a list of the property owners that are going to be affected, but I think we need to have a meeting before snow is three feet deep outside and people have a hard time getting to a meeting to start discussing this. I know you don't have the money, and the tragic thing is, in the lapse of time up to now, and by the time you start, the seven-hundred-thousand dollars is probably not close to what you're going to need. And I think you need to understand the hardships you're putting on the property owners, what you're going to create in the neighborhood, how you're going to finance it, what you want to do and what you can't do. And I've talked or tried to address this for six months, and I really think it's time that the council starts nitpicking on some of these items if you'll have a public hearing so everybody could express themselves. And I'd like to be first on the list. I'd like to work with you and not fight you, and I don't want it to go to the last minute and say, well, this is what we had as preliminary. This is the way it's going to be. Because I can see so many holes shot in this thing that it's not going to work very smooth. But it needs to be done. The sidewalks, the intersections, all of this stuff should have been done five years ago.
Paul, I talked to Kent Ralston today, and their answer is, that's not going to happen for three years. And I said, well, part of the problem is, we have the plan that was approved by the state of Iowa, is the DOT fund, so that we know what we plan to do. But how they're going to increase the side on the south side, how are we going to, you know, are we going to take that property? Are we going to pay the property owners? You know, what is Mid-America going to do with this? And Josiah is the person that Kent directed me to and said, Josiah, is, we don't do it. Kent said, we don't do it. It's, the money is there. You're going to have to pay the extra seven-hundred or a thousand, or ten thousand, or seven, whatever it is, seven thousand or ten thousand, whatever. It's up to the city to come up with the money. So we need to start talking about it, but unless we have the plan in front of us, it's not going to help to call the neighbors in. It's just going to create, you know, more frustration. So it's up to Josiah to meet with you and to tell him how you feel about this. He has the plan. I mean, we worked on it together. It was approved by the state of Iowa. So, you know, he knows what's going to happen or what is planned to happen. to happen. So, and after we get some organization together here, we can have a public meeting, but I don't think we know what we can, you know, where we're going with this.
Well, my concern is, is how it's going to affect the hotel entrance.
That's what their concern is.
But if we, if we wait three or four years, it'll be a little after the fact.
No, that's why we met three or four months ago when we-
Yeah, but nothing came of it.
I know, I know.
Nothing comes of anything.
And that's why I called, that's why I called Kent, and I said, you know, I know Paul wants to know, and Greg and Jim need to know so that they can build, we don't know where their, the Mid-America, you know, is going to put their power supply or anything like that, and we need to know that. So, nail Josiah down tomorrow and see-
I'll definitely do that. I mean, I, I, I just, I didn't know if we're trying to hide something-
No.
Or keep it away.
No.
But-
No.
We just don't seem to get any, any, in gear on anything.
That's right, and we don't plan ahead.
And I don't expect you to understand it until you're educated.
Mm-hmm.
But somebody's got to pick up the ball and carry this, and if it's going to be Josiah, that's fine.
Yeah, that's what Kent told me today.
I keep coming to meetings mentioning the subject, and it doesn't go any-
I know, and I talked to Kent, and I said, you know, he said, it isn't our baby anymore. It's the, University Heights has to figure out how they're going to do it. So, it's a Josiah project.
Okay.
Steve, do you guys have any history of how this sequence could go? I mean, I hear what he's saying, you know, it'd be nice to get ahead of this, but I also hear what Dottie's saying in terms of, you know, the timeline. I, I would, I would personally like to, you know, to be ahead of it too, um, to understand what's going to happen on Melrose and-
And where, where are we going to get the money? Is it coming from the hotel?
Yeah, it always goes down to the money.
You know?
And who's going to cover it.
Aside from the money, I mean, that's kind of my question on sequence. Can we, you know, we don't have the money yet. Is it, is it problematic to be having a meeting
Yes, it's too soon, way too soon.
About trade-offs?
I think with OUP, there was, uh, some, you know, where the developer did some work ahead of time, and then we paid them back. Maybe this could work like that too, you know, where the developer could pay for some of this underground work-
Yeah.
That you've been meeting for, and somehow we, uh, pay them back in some way.
But I don't, yeah, I mean, there's a matter of bidding, there's a matter of, you know, but we have the plan that was approved by the DOT.
That's right.
So, we have the-
I know you worked on that.
You know what, I think Paul is really asking for an open house to view what this plan is, and, um-
Well, he can talk to Josiah tomorrow.
But I'm thinking, but he's also advocating for the population, the city to-
It's too soon.
The affected property owners, if you're going to have to condemn or buy some of their property, you ought to have them notified so they know what kind of a slap in the face they're going to pay. I agree. There's a lot of things that could be duplicated here, like the new sidewalk-
Yeah.
At the entrance of the hotel. Well, if you put it in according to the plans that the motel has, then with next year, tear it out because of what you're going to do on Olive Court.
No, they're, they're-
Then the next year, you're going to widen the street and acquire this property. You got overlap, a waste of money, time, and everything.
But they have to, but they, everybody, like, I tried to get, it's like herding cats. I tried to get everybody together three months ago, you know, because I want to know whether we're going to do a taking, if we're going to buy it, if we're, you know, condemn it. I don't know what we're going to do for the, the-
And I think Josiah will bring us some options of what, you know, what we-
Well, he's supposedly got estimates, but I don't know his criteria-
Yeah, yeah, I don't-
And what he requested. But I think that sometime relatively soon, just peace of mind for me, I would like to know what direction things are going.
Mm-hmm.
Who's going to pay for what?
I know.
Who's going to be assessed for that? And God willing, I'll live through this, but I, it just seems like it's so drawn out, and it has to be addressed, and maybe you don't have the bonding or the whatever you're going to do.
Well, we, you have to-
But you got to know what you're going to do.
But see, they're, they fund so far ahead, five or six years ahead award the contract. And so, you know, then everybody kind of drags, you know, their legs and, but it needs to be, you're right, it needs to be, uh-
Well, it's never going to get any cheaper, and the more this is drug out, and if people have an idea of what the pros and cons are.
Well, you can't, the, the rules say that, I don't believe that you can even initiate it until like six months before the money comes in.
That's right.
So, we can't do anything, but what we can do is get our, you know, ducks in a row so that we know how we're going to do it, and that isn't laid out. So, that's, and Kent said, Josiah, I said, can't we all meet? And he said, we're, we're out of it, and we have nothing to do with it. The, it's, the city has to decide how they want to do it.
So, the city, the city's application for the service transportation block grant?
Yeah, BG, STBG.
Thanks.
Yeah.
That's what they call it.
The city, you know, uh, was required to commit at least 20% of the project cost as, you know, funding. Obviously, the city didn't write a check for it, but that's, that's the city, so the city's commitment on the, on the application that was approved is-
And actually, we said 30%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, yeah, and that was the minimum, right.
Yeah, because-
So, it's like 465,000.
Give you more points if you pay, yeah.
You know, there hasn't been any discussion or certainly any action about assessing, uh, property owners that are adjacent to the project or anything like that, like, you know.
The only discussion I had with the council back then was possibly we could apply for some more funding towards that project, you know, later down the road, another avenue like a, a transportation improvement program or a TAP program. There's transportation alternative grant money, and possibly they'd give us some money there. I've talked to Ken about that.
Can we-
So that we can get more funding.
Well, we do it.
Can we at a minimum get a schedule of when hotel tax revenues of both the property tax and the hotel tax are going to be coming in, and what, what commitments we've already-
Yeah, you did that, right? That was done.
Okay, I haven't seen that. Can you send that to me, please?
Um, yeah, I can do that, but now we have to revise it because they haven't dug. They're, they're not in yet. So, I'm going, I'll work with Jim and get a better schedule of when they're going to be up and running. Because we're moving-
He's got a year and two months, huh?
Did he? Eight months.
Well, that's how long-
He said a year and two months.
He said a year and two months.
He'd be around.
Well, I'll tell Ken because that's going to be the-
I thought that's fast.
Well, so though, depending on what the status of their pri, of the construction is.
There's an 18-month delay for property, for property taxes, but revenue is what she's, what she's at.
I want to know all the revenues.
For the seven-
Sounds like they're still trying to meet the December 2019 schedule by saying one year and two months.
There'll be a partial assessment on that property effective January 1, and so there'll be something, there'll be an, an enhanced assessed value, which means an increase in property taxes starting January 1. But Sylvia's right, we pay taxes a year behind in Iowa, so those funds don't come in. But you don't have to wait till the hotel's done before property tax revenue is going to be accruing. Um, you do have to wait till the hotel's done and rooms are rented before hotel motel tax will be received. So, that's, that sounds more like calendar year 2020.
What is all, what are the harms in terms of trying to plan it? I know we already have a plan, but in terms of trying to nail some of these things down further, I mean, is there a concern specifically about doing that?
Yeah, Paul just said that he's concerned that we're not prepared, we're not going to be prepared as the time approaches.
We, we don't know how we're going to take the land, you know.
Well, that's what I was asking, Steve. I mean, Steve, do you have a sense of downside to starting to talk about these things with more detail now?
Um, I don't, so my sense of things, one, I don't, I haven't gotten into the, you know, the plan documents to the extent of even knowing if there's right-of-way that the city needs to acquire. I mean, I take Paul at his word, he's probably looked at them closer than I have. But I don't know if there's right-of-way acquisition that we're talking about here.
Yeah, there's some acquisition.
There's some.
It's built into that.
Plan.
Yeah, maybe like-
I mean-
Hundred thousand dollars are a big amount.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, starting to talk about that, I don't think there's any problem with that. With regard to payment of, for the project, um, you know, it's, this is certainly a council and policy decision, but, you know, if the council wants to say, we don't intend to assess neighboring or adjoining adjacent property owners, that probably would be a signal that the council could send to neighboring and adjacent property owners, as, you know, as opposed to just making a geo bond and spreading-
Because it involves, the plan involves, uh, at least, I think, five feet on the south side for the highway. So, that would take a lot of people's backyards.
I, that's probably part of the land acquisition. I think it's right around 100,000 or something. I just reviewed that not very long ago.
Yeah.
Anyway, okay.
So, Dottie, since your streets and sidewalks, what's your recommendation?
Pardon?
Since your streets and sidewalks, what's your recommendation?
I think she said, meet with Josiah tomorrow.
Yeah, I think, he has to meet with Josiah, and, you know, I've been talking with Josiah constantly. So, uh, but it's premature to, to get any citizen input, and we're just going to have chaos because we don't know, we don't know how we're going to pay and pay for it, you know, exactly how much land and, so.
So, you'll follow up with Josiah on what-
Yeah, and as soon as, in fact, what time are you meeting tomorrow?
2:00.
2:00?
Basically, the public safety, parking, handicap parking, a whole lot of things that are involved in this.
Mm-hmm.
The two sidewalks that come across the bridge are eight feet wide. In 2010, he widened it 11 feet wide, bought property from me for the bike path, 11 feet wide, extended it to 14 feet in front of Stella's and ran it up the street, and that's worked fine. And I'm all in favor of that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, on the south side of the street-
That's where we-
It's eight foot wide, you're going to have a five-foot wide sidewalk. That's where it ought to continue eight feet up to Foger Avenue, just for football game traffic to keep people out of the street.
Mm-hmm. Well-
But then, you're doing away with my handicap parking spot in front of my building.
Yeah, probably.
In 2010, I gave up seven parking spots for three, which is one handicap spot and one in front and back. Now you want to do away with that. I've used every square inch of my property for parking space to commit to the 32 spaces I have to have to meet your ordinance, but I need a total of three handicap spots. Okay, I got one in the east parking lot. If I put a second one in there, I give up two parking spots because of the side exit rule. The only place I can put handicap parking is at the bottom of the north parking lot because it's level, and then they got to push a wheel steer all the way up to get to Stella's.
What about the park, the park area?
Right, because it's all on the slopes.
Okay.
What are you going to do to help me, or are you going to condemn the business district?
Well, with a comprehensive plan, which we'll all have an opportunity to buy into or to make recommendations, is envisioning the commercial, commercial space on the south side, uh, from Kosher up to like Olive. Um, there, there should be parking in there, and that's right across the street from Stella's.
You're going to put in parking ramps?
I'm, I think they're going to put, they're going to have to put parking in if they're going to have commercial, because they-
But you're taking it away from me, so you're not going to let them have it in front of their property.
No.
So, where are you going to put it on those little 60-foot wide lots or whatever?
Well, I think that-
You won't have any space to build anything with your parking requirements for business. It's just common sense, it doesn't fit.
Well, we, we are landlocked and we don't have much space, so-
So, why are you making plans to make that side side commercial? It's, it's a hindrance traffic to get in and out of a car.
The whole area is supposed to be commercial, from the hotel up through Stella's.
Supposed to be.
Um-
This is why I really want a meeting. I got pages of notes, and I don't want to keep any longer tonight, but I'm disappointed that we don't get this on the agenda and get Josiah kicked in the butt so we know what is in his head, if what he's trying to do, and so the property owners and myself will know, and what you can do to help us, or what I can do to help you, but you're creating more problems. There are very few bikes that use Melrose Avenue. They're using the sidewalks all the time.
Well, the purpose, the purpose of widening it is to relocate the center line, so that that, that's an arterial highway there. And with the traffic back and forth, you can't, you can't even get across Melrose.
Tell me about it.
Yeah, so, I mean-
That's been all my life.
So, it has to be widened. So, um, and I think that we need to talk to, talk to Josiah to see what he thinks is possible, because there's no point in bringing it to council. You saw how nobody can decide on anything tonight. So, we have to have some guidance, and we, I can show you the plans that were approved by the DOT. But like Sunset, it's an arterial highway, and so there are certain rules and conditions.
Do you have that plan, do you have that?
No.
All right, what's your email address?
No, I'll, I'll see if I can get a copy from-
I'll email it to you.
Yeah.
I'll email it to you. I can talk to you after the meeting. I mean, it does show like the right-of-way acquisitions in the south and shows other things, so if you don't have that, you ought to have it.
You want Pat Maum transformer, where are you going to put those?
Can I just ask that we add that particular, um, document to the streets and sidewalks on the city webpage? That way it's easily available when anybody wants it.
Well, I wonder if we want it on the city page yet.
Yeah, on the city page, and the streets and sidewalks city page have the-
Well, I don't know if we want to, people, if we haven't decided what we are going to do, it isn't the time to open it up to the community.
You probably don't want to have a member of the community circulating in one way or the other, just be transparent.
They're not, they don't have it, the community doesn't have it.
Some of them do.
I think some do.
I feel like it's a public document already.
I think some do.
Right, so I think it's already been on the website. So, let's just note that because where on the website is-
I used to have a couple of sheets of it, but I wish I could hand it to you. I've handed it to other people.
But I don't anymore.
But I don't anymore either. But, uh, we'll, we'll get something to you, so you have it, or give you a hard copy. Uh, anyway, uh, let's go on to, uh, announcements. I just want to say the next council meeting is Monday, November 12th at 7:00 PM, and the next, um, work session, we're calling it a special meeting for the Swisher Track plans, will be Wednesday, November 7th at 7:30 here. Are there any other announcements? Is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting's adjourned by unanimous consent.